Superintendent's mid-cycle review. And the administrative items, action and our information include the superintendent's report, the assistant superintendent's report, Warren approvals. Our consent actions include approval of minutes, the minutes of February thirteenth, 2019, acceptance of gifts and donations, committee reports of activities, member reports, action items, and then we will adjourn. Is everybody on board with the plan for this evening?
Yes.
Excellent. So, jumping right to the request for any public comment. So if there's anybody here who would like to share anything, now's your time. I see lots of administrators in the audience. Thank you for being here. But I do not see anybody for public comment. And we will move right along then to opening up our public hearing for the FY twenty school budget. So I'm going to open that hearing. And I'm going to ask Mr. Adams to fill us in.
See if this works. It did a moment ago. It does. Excellent.
Thank you.
So, thank you. First and foremost, I want to, you know, thank all of the administrators and who are here tonight to help support and answer questions should you have them with regard to the FY twenty budget. And what I can say is that it's a team effort. We've spent a lot of time, going back to October, working through the budget and finally getting to a position where we feel comfortable presenting the superintendent's budget to you for your approval this evening to move forward to the town. And as we started this process back in October, we're always looking about at our services that we're currently providing. We're analyzing the numbers of our students, our enrollment, the things that we need to continue to move our district forward. But what's most critical is we take our blueprint for continual student improvement. For those who are looking at home or listening at home and watching, that's our strategic plan. That is our document that we base our decisions on for the public schools and the budgetary needs that we have. You know, I just put in here, that's the guideline, right? So we look at the goals of the committee, the school committee, we look at the blueprint, and we look at all of the things that go into running a high-quality public school system. And it's difficult to do. Sometimes we have to make compromises one way or the other because of the funding and the resources we have. But as long as you know that that's our starting point, that the decisions we've made that I present to you tonight are based on that blueprint, you know, I think it's a really good, good starting point. So what you'll notice first and foremost is that we're looking for an eight-point-two-seven percent increase over fiscal year nineteen. So the total budget that we're looking at is thirty-three million, one-hundred-and-fifty-one-thousand-six-hundred-and-forty-seven dollars. And I'll get into that specific, a little more specifically as we go through this. Hard to read some of the orange for you, possibly on the, on the screens, but this document, this information came directly from the, my executive summary that I've posted online. So again, I want to emphasize to the folks who are listening at home and watching that everything you could ask for within this budget that I'm proposing is online. It's the executive summary that I sent out to the community, but line item by line item detail is, is there for your, your reading pleasure. And it's, you just go into the, the business section of the, of the website and the budget and you'll find it. But what you'll notice is, is we start looking at last year's final appropriated budget to the schools of thirty million, six-twenty. There are certain things that we always have to account for, right? The increase in our salaries, our cost of living increases that go across teachers, administrators, and, you know, potential, net of potential early retirement savings that we have. And we move through the other salaries of, of ESPs, paraprofessionals, if you will, we call them educated and support personnel, the custodians, increased salaries for bus monitors, potential increase for new personnel. And that's a big line item of four-hundred-and-eighty-four thousand, which I'll show a little bit later on in, in the slideshow as to what we're asking for with that four-hundred-and-eighty-four thousand and how it benefits us. You'll notice every year we struggle with looking at our out-of-district tuition payments and expected students who will be outplaced for those students that we cannot serve in our community. As I've mentioned in prior years or prior meetings, we're saving about five million dollars a year, net of any reimbursement from the state because of the programs that we've built internally over the past five years at every one of our schools. Not only do we believe, and I can certainly speak for our administrators, not only do we believe it's the right thing to do to, to be inclusive within our school system and have all of our students, if we can provide a high-quality education for all of our students internally, that's what we, we want to do. And if it helps us from a financial standpoint, which it certainly has, all the, all the more better for us. We look at increase this year, though, of about five-hundred-and-seventy-eight thousand of students who potentially could be outplaced. There is a built-in number for students that we've identified currently in our system that we don't know if we will be able to service their needs next year in our school system. So we have to look at that. And then increasing our transportation for those students, that comes directly from the Except Collaborative. We know that that's the number increase they're charging us this year. And somebody asked recently, why is it such a large number? There are lots of reasons, but we have a collaborative of sixteen districts, and one of our districts has pulled out and is using some private transportation, which then still increases some of the costs for the, for the other districts, which Ashland is the second-largest user of transportation for, for out-of-district students. And then some smaller line items as you go through, which I won't necessarily belabor, you know, the twenty-one thousand dollars, as, you know, as you know, we're in year two of responsive classroom training, utilities. But the other piece that you have to look at is the revolving accounts. And while it's only a small decrease in reliance, I'll show you a little bit later, we're starting to get to a point where our revolving accounts are, school choice mainly, for the Ashland Public Schools, is starting to decline in terms of the amount we have to offer to our schools and offset our budget, partly because we don't have space. Our enrollment is growing so quickly that we no longer are going to be offering choice students seats, typically K through eight. We may have one class, maybe two, that we might think about it. That number comes before you in April, May, but the high school is typically where we've added five seats at each grade level the past couple of years. That's slowly declining. And we have to be thoughtful of that as we move forward with budgets in the future. As you can see, enrollment drives everything for us. Go back to two thousand fourteen, fifteen, at twenty, almost twenty-five hundred students, twenty-four eighty-three, we're at twenty-seven thirty-five as of February twelfth. So a ninety-nine student difference from last year. The, the number of students themselves has also impacted the revenue coming into the community. I want to be clear, last meeting I talked about the Chapter Seventy funding that, that is increasing about one-point-six-seven million dollars. Well, part of it is because of our growth, the way the state is calculating the foundation enrollment, but also the tuition, going to full-day kindergarten tuition-free is, is clearly helping drive that Chapter Seventy number. But I think it's important. We're anticipating another hundred students over the next three to five years is what NESDEC has projected for the Ashland Public Schools. So, increase in out-of-district special education enrollment, as I show, it's, it's really interesting, right? If you go look at a four-year cycle, four-year window, and Kathy can best speak to this kind of stuff, we just don't know at times. So, in two thousand sixteen, seventeen, we saw a relatively flat increase in our out-of-district costs. Then in two thousand seventeen, eighteen, a tremendous increase. Eighteen, nineteen, again, pretty flat. But then, another projection of, of, you know, sixteen-point-seven percent increase this year. Some of that accounts for students moving in to our district, which I've mentioned in the past, but also that we're now fiscally responsible for, but also students that we've identified this year that potentially could be outplaced. So that number does include those students. Last year is the first time I presented this information, which is a breakdown by building and by department. MAS-C, I think it was about a year ago or two years ago at their meeting, talked about how equity of where you're spending your dollars across the district and from building to building, and what does that look like? So this is a slide that Barbara and I started pulling together last year, and we've, you know, we feel it's really important to share that when you look at the percentages, is it consistent from one building to the other? Are we spending more dollars specifically in one grade level versus another, or one building versus another? And I think, you know, it's, it's pretty telling that we're pretty consistent across the board. We talked about the high school obviously being a little larger, they have more staff, four grade levels versus the three-grade levels. But it's, it's relatively consistent compared to last year. Still worry, I mean, we talk about out, special education and the out-of-district costs, it's about thirty-three percent of the entire budget, which, that's, I'd say relatively consistent for the last few years overall. But again, you know, it's includes, I want to be clear, this, this does include the new positions allocated to the specific buildings already. Okay? So it's, there, there's no number set aside somewhere else, it's, it's in here. So assuming you pass the budget and we, we have the positions that we're looking for, they're already included in terms of the allocation. And I know I'm going quickly with this, but I want to leave questions for you so we can go back and forth. I've shared this with the school committee, and this is, again, is online in the executive summary with regard to our reliance on revolving funds. And we're using a significant amount of money to, to offset the budget, well over two million dollars. And as you can see, if we look at the anticipated expenditures in FY twenty, that line, circuit breaker, for those at home wondering what circuit breaker is, that's reimbursement we get from the state for our out-of-district special education costs. Again, it doesn't cover all of the out-of-district costs. It's a percentage reimbursement. What I can say to the community as you're listening, please call Senator Spilka, please call Representative Lewis, and ask them to, to really work towards funding circuit breaker at what is required by Mass General Law, which is seventy-five percent. This year's projected at sixty-eight percent for reimbursement currently with the governor's budget. So it's well below where we're supposed to be. The last three years, it's been between seventy and seventy-two. Kathy, what's the lowest you've seen, twenty?
Um, I think it was probably a thirty-four percent.
Yeah, thirty-four percent. That's pretty low, in terms of reimbursement to a community. Less reliance on the building rental. As you'll see, the international tuition, that money is, is, are the students who are coming from China that we have, and anticipated we had this year and next year. School bus revolving staying pretty consistent. We'll talk a little bit about that tonight when we talk about bus fees. You know, a little foreshadowing, we're not asking for any increases, but that's, you know, that's what we're looking at. School choice funding, again, our concern is eventually that number's going to start declining as a revenue source for us because we're not going to have the space for our students to, to come into Ashland. And then athletic revolving, that's always a concern Barbara and I have, is that we've got to figure out a way as we move forward to pull more of the athletic budget into the operating. We are so fee-reliant on this for athletics. Total athletics is, is less than one percent of the operating budget for the Ashland Public Schools. And, and we certainly want to consider, you know, we, we've had a lot of conversation about fees and what we do with fees and, but we have to absorb about two-hundred-and-seventy-thousand dollars additional expense that we collect in revenues. Two-seventy-five is, you know, we're anticipating two-hundred this year, but it's been two-seventy in the past. So that leads me to the new personnel requests. I've shared this with the community, and what I can do is have, you know, if you have direct questions to the principals and the directors, I will open it up for that. But we're looking at preschool, half-full-time position for duly-certified teacher. And remember, when someone goes duly-certified, at, at Pittaway, for instance, half of that salary goes into the operating budget for the schools. The other half is covered by the fees for, for the, you know, the peer role models that pay to come into the preschool. So it, it's a split charge, right? So half of it has to come into, because it's special education, which is required by law for us to provide, it comes into the operating budget. The Warren School, we're looking at another, creating another therapeutic classroom, you know, strictly for, you know, the social-emotional, but that's dependent upon the ability to have two more modular classrooms attached to the Warren School. And that's another conversation we'll have later on. We're, we're working through a, the procurement of, and the costs of, of the modulators and working with the town in terms of capital planning for that piece. You know, adjusting the secretarial duties, increasing music teacher. MINDS, looking at our ELL population, as I stated at the last meeting, we're up thirty-eight ELL students since October one. We're, we're at a hundred-and-seventy-one English-language learner students currently. At the time of the Chapter Seventy, we were one, at October one, it was a hundred-and-thirty-three. So we've seen a tremendous increase there already. Full-time literacy teacher, two ESPs, which are specifically ABA, middle school, again, another full-time English-language learner teacher to bring us up to two, and two more ESPs specifically for the, the programs that we've created at the middle school. The high school, two-point-six full-time positions, full-time English-language learner ESP to assist, Mrs. Walden at this point in time, with the number of students who are coming through the high school as well, a full-time wellness teacher, and a point-six full-time computer science technology teacher. We have a, we have a full-time teacher currently who has asked the district if she could move to a point-four position. So the total increase, so we have to backfill it with that full-time position. So the total increase, however, is just, is point-six. It's, it's the, overall. Special education, increase the positions that already currently exist for physical therapists and BCBA. The district curriculum office, the one thing I've talked about for five years, we have about a hundred, since the beginning of the year, we've had a hundred-and-ninety-plus enrollees into the district and un-enrollees. So having someone centralized to be able to collect the data, get the proper data. So right now, we have five different locations, taking data from parents who are moving into our community and/or leaving our community, and, and the data is not necessarily getting accurately input in all of the buildings, for lots of reasons. And from my take, that's critical information that we are sending to the state for reporting, but that reporting is what helps define our Chapter Seventy funding. There's a purpose for this. And if students are coming in and we don't properly label them as English-language learner students, and so we're not getting a piece of that, you know, funding through the foundation budget, we need to make sure everything is accurate. You know, I've, I would love to be able to see someone in that role who has the capability of speaking more than one language. As we know, we have tremendous amount of students and families who are moving into our community who do not speak English, and collecting that proper data to ensure that they actually live in town, that they have the proper documentation in terms of their residency is really important. And, you know, having, and also having the ability to, you know, set someone at ease. I'm not saying we're going to be able to do that, I'm just saying that's something I've certainly would like to see occur more and more across all of our buildings as well, not just the district. And a facilities department person that can help out. As you know, Mr. Richardson is split between the town and the schools. And as you've seen the town grow, there are many projects that are on the horizon, not only for the town, but we have many projects that have been approved through town meeting for the schools. And keeping track and, and monitoring those projects has become a challenge. And it's been a challenge for all three individuals before Joe. And this, in talking to, to Joe, is, is a position that we think will certainly assist him. It's specifically, directly attributed to the schools, and it's, it's that next-level, mid-level manager, if you will, of the custodians and the maintenance staff to ensure that the projects that we have are well underway, they're, they're being taken care of, and, and go from there. That's where we are. So that is what leads us to a thirty-three million, one-hundred-and-fifty-one-thousand-six-hundred-and-forty-seven-dollar ask for this budget. I will be upfront, I've had conversations with the town manager, Ms. Durand and I met with them after the Chapter Seventy numbers came out and after we've looked at projected forecast of, of the finances. And this is a number that we came to in agreement. As you know, in the projections, we've had in years past about a three-point-seven-five percent increase agreed to, and this is in addition to that three-point-seven-five, ends up being the eight-point-two-seven, but it is a number that we all feel comfortable with as a, you know, as the management from the town side and the school department. I will leave it then to you because we've been through these numbers a lot in the past and, and like I said, I do have the admin here, so.
Well, I'll open it up to the board first. Anybody have, I know we have been through this quite a bit. We've had some time with all the administrators who are here tonight. Again, thank you. And I know that we've heard from Mr. Adams about some of the changes in our Chapter Seventy and, and the plans for that. So I don't know that any of this is news to us, but certainly if there are any further questions or anything that you want to explore, or anybody out there, this is the, if there are any members of the public that want to chime in, this is the budget hearing, so now's your chance. Who's got a question? Anybody comment?
I may, I have a few that I'll ask, I'm just, just kind of looking down the dial, see if anybody else wants to start.
I have a silly, small one. Is the, the reduction in utilities, is that also accounting for two potential modular units?
No. Yeah. But I don't know, I don't know what that cost would be. I don't think it would be dramatic based on, you know, the two modulators attaching to the electrical that's there. But Barbara, you want to answer the question about, there were concerns about the modulators, first and foremost, whether or not we could attach them to the current electrical circuits that are there.
So, we're working with the town to get capital money for the two additional modulators. Part of that includes about a hundred thousand dollars for electrical upgrades because we cannot even add the two modulators without doing an upgrade to the electrical service at Warren. This reduction in, in utilities is a very conservative reduction due to all of our solar and net metering projects we have going on. I'm certainly comfortable that we've left enough on the plate to pick up the cost of two modulators.
Thank you.
Thanks, Jim. I do have a couple of questions for you. One, you mentioned something that I didn't recall, I haven't come up before, about our use of the Except Collaborative for transportation. And in just talking, you talked about it being sort of, we're the highest user.
Second.
Second highest user. Is there some specific reason why that's shaking out that way? Is it?
Well, a couple of reasons, actually. We've got to go back a couple of years. So Framingham is typically the largest user, right? They are, they are pulling out of the transportation part of, of Except. So they would be absorbing typically the largest share of the overall transportation of the fleet that exists in, in the collaborative. When we moved from having all of the classrooms at the middle school and the high school, our transportation costs were certainly lower because the way that the factoring works is the distance between where we're transporting kids. So now we're transporting kids from Ashland to Natick, to their new facility, which has added a, a factor in cost onto that. We have kids that we are now transporting further distances because of day and residential placement, or, well, day placements. So the, the increase, I mean, I'm hesitant to say, if Framingham had stayed within the organization, our increase would be, I think we calculated, under twenty thousand dollars, I think. It was, it was pretty small. But because of now we're the second-largest consumer of, of the use of, of the vehicles, our factor increased. I think Natick is now number one.
Yeah, I guess I was thinking about, I mean, most of the districts that I think are a part of the collaborative are similar in size, give or take a little bit.
Yep.
And I guess, I don't know if our, our demands were higher for the transportation or it's just, you know.
We, we certainly have more students, but some of the other districts who are part of the collaborative have their own private transportation.
Okay.
They're not required. As being part of the collaborative, I want to be clear, as being part of the collaborative, we do not have to use the transportation aspect of it. We've analyzed it, and we can't afford to go out and purchase our own vans and drivers and insurance and, at, at a cheaper rate. This is still more cost-effective to us at this point in time, but the other districts do have smaller amounts of students.
Okay.
And Natick, again, has a larger, everything is closer for Natick now.
Right.
So their factor becomes smaller in terms of, but it also depends if you have students who, I don't know how many, Kathy, we have particular students who have maybe one student, but they need a monitor, they need an aide on that bus. There's, that drives up the transportation costs as well. So, there are a variety of factors.
Right, thank you. And the fact that not everybody's participating also helps that.
Yes.
My other question was on the revolving funds. I think I tend to ask this question probably every, every year, but is there sort of a, a guidance or, or set of guidelines around what is appropriate to maintain in a given revolving account as a balance from year to year that we're, or, or something that we're targeting?
I'll let Barbara.
I thought you might do that.
Yeah. And we have had that conversation. I could answer.
Uh, we have, there's no hard and fast guideline in writing, but most districts and the conversation we've had here with the, the town manager is we try to use what money comes in this year, next year. So we're never spending the money that's coming in last week because you don't know that. It's just a, a variable that we're unsure of. So once we know how much money we have coming in this year, that's what we try to expend the next year. It doesn't always work dollar-for-dollar, but that's the general guideline we try to go by.
So it almost sounds like we're trying to keep basically a year's worth of expenses?
Correct.
True, because it's a known.
Okay.
So what had happened, I mean, it's a good question. If you go back, if we go back and look into the documents, really in the executive summary, and we look at the revolving over a three-year window, last year, we actually spent a lot out of the school choice. We, we recognized the fact that we had built up a pretty good savings in the school choice account, and we spent a lot of that down. I think we're trying to get it down to about three-hundred thousand dollars to be our, our number, which is about a yearly amount that we have. So as we progress through that, and we'll be coming back in a month to allocate school choice funding to the schools and to the departments, you'll notice that we're going to ask for a larger increase to those specific schools and departments so we can continue to spend it down a little bit.
And I think my last question is really more for benefit of people who might be watching at home, may not understand some of the, the history, but you talked about meetings with town management and sort of agreed-upon budget figures. Maybe if you could just offer some context for those dialogues and a little bit of reference to the policy that's been placed for three or four years.
Yeah, almost five now. I mean, this is, this is the fourth year, next year's the fifth year. So, hate to use that word, but we, we go, let's go back four years and talk about when we had the override conversation and, in this community. And as it was moving through and, and the override, you know, wasn't successful, we sat down at that time with, with Mr. Skiyavi and, and we all sat down to talk about what is, what are the projections of revenue and expenses that exist currently over a five-year window? And in so doing, we, we tried projecting what our costs would be to a district. That means factoring in salary increases, that health benefits for the town side, all of those things. And so what was agreed upon was that the school district could count on, within the budget, a three-point-seven-five percent increase to the budget. So each year, starting with the ending approved amount at, at town meeting, we could count on a three-point-seven-five percent. That's, that was our budgeting number. And then, as the governor's budget comes through... And then as the governor's budget comes through, works its way through the process, and we won't know what our true numbers are aid from the town, or from the state to the town until July. That's when the budget is passed at the state level. But what we did was we made a, there's a policy that was written between the FinCom, Board of Selectmen, and the school committee saying, let's evaluate what we think our estimates are compared to what the estimates are and eventually what the final numbers are with the state aid coming into the community. And if there are an increase in revenues or an increase in expenses, we've agreed that there's a 70-30 split between the schools and the town for their budgets. So if, simply if revenues increased by a million dollars that we didn't fully, that we didn't anticipate, that's net of all expenses, let's just assume. The town, the school budget, operating budget would increase by 70%, take 70% of that, which is 700,000. So if you go back three or four town meetings, we had a huge increase at the fall town meeting of about 500,000, it was a little more than that, to our operating budget because the numbers of the, the final budget numbers from the state were much more beneficial to the community than what we're expected when we had the May town meeting. So for instance, this year, we're working off the budget for 3.75% with an increase of about a 1% Chapter 70 increase, which is about $80,000 typically. Well, the governor's budget came out the fourth Wednesday of January, and we saw a $1.67 million increase. Not 85,000, but it's a pretty significant amount. And again, at the last meeting, we talked about the reasons behind that. Enrollment, kindergarten, the classifications of our students, of ELL, disadvantaged students, et cetera. And the governor, how he is looking at the Chapter 70 foundation formula itself.
The number's not final, just to be clear.
No, the number is not final.
You did some research into, into how much we could rely on it.
Right, so that conversation then occurs with, you know, Mr. Herbert and Ms. Iacapone. And Barbara and I sat down and we were having this conversation saying, do we feel comfortable with that increase in the Chapter 70? And through our research for the last five years, we've never, we've always seen an increase, with the exception of one year which stayed flat, we've always seen an increase as the iterations of the budget move forward. We have, before that July 1 final budget, or even later in July sometimes, we've seen an increase in Chapter 70. So in that conversation with the town, with town management, you know, we worked through and said, let's use this number. We believe this is a real number. So how do we work through the process of, you know, taking that increase and spreading it between the town and the school operating budgets? And so we had those meetings, and the one thing that really was clear was when we went to the tuition-free kindergarten, we noticed that the Chapter 70 increased by $400,000 just because of that alone. And so we were able to take that $400,000 initially and pull it back into the operating budget. That was the conversation that we had with the town manager. And then we looked at our, our out-of-district transportation costs that were rising. And we said, you know what, that's important too, that's going to exist still in the future. So we pulled that in, and then we went to a 70-30 split after taking into account those two major factors. But it's been a really, I'm really proud, and I think Barbara can say the same thing, we're really proud of the work we've done with the, with town management to recognize the fact that we have some drivers in our budget that we just can't predict from year to year. And out-of-district special education cost is really the largest one. We've worked hard at trying to absorb a lot of that in our budget from year to year. And the increase in the Chapter 70 funding is allowing us to do that as well. So that increase of the 500,000 plus in out-of-district cost is being absorbed in the budget. We're not looking to move to a position where we're using the out-of-district special ed stabilization fund. We're absorbing it. And being able to have the Chapter 70 increase has been really significant for us. Is that sort of the overview you're looking for?
Yeah.
Maybe a little more in-depth than you wanted?
No, no, rail of the money, no pun intended. I'm all set, I'm sure.
Excellent, thank you. Any, anybody out there with a question or wanting to participate in the budget hearing before we close it? Anybody? Yes, Ms. Bennett, would you like to come up so that it can be recorded for the public? Thank you, you know the drill.
Is this as a resident or a minister?
This is as a resident, sir.
Yeah.
Excellent, thank you.
I was just curious about whether Nezdek's projections have been accurate in terms of our enrollment.
Can I jump in there?
Yeah, that's Mr. Adams. I was wondering the same thing when he said.
Yeah, good question. So they're really proud of this year. They were off, they were off five students.
Yeah, for the past few years, they.
But that being said, they were off five students in totality.
Okay.
Now, when you predict 190 kindergarten kids and we got 230, you know, that sort of concerns me a little bit. You know, but that being said, but in totality, they had the number correct. And the one thing you have to remember is Nezdek, some of our total population of students does include the number, the 51 school choice students we have. Nezdek nets those out as they produce theirs, their projections as well. They're not far off, but we have, we're updating it now twice a year versus many districts have done it one time a year. We've now moved to a December, which is after the October numbers, and we typically do in April as well, because I want to really compare. We have a lot of movement. Like I said, from October 1 to, I don't know how many in each building, but from October 1 to today, 33, you know, more students in.
In and out.
In and out, just in, or 38 more in ELL alone, so.
So just as a follow-up, just on that EL point, I know that, you know, that is also because that's not part, becomes part, does not initially become part of our Chapter 70 reimbursement, that that's a huge number because it means a lot of dollars to us. You know, our change from October 1 till now, which is, you know, a significant portion of the school year. The other question that I had related to school enrollment is, in terms of school choice, a significant decrease, right? And so I just wondered, do we track how many students might come to the district if we had space for them?
Yes. Answer is yes. We do, Claudia, Karen keeps a spreadsheet. I've actually had probably about 20 inquiries right now for next year. And many of these students are asking to get in at the lower levels. They're not, you know, so we do have these conversations with families who call and say, hey, you know, I'm looking, I want my child to come in at Mendez or at the middle school. And we're telling them, last year we had no spots available, we didn't open it up, only in a couple of specific classes, sizes. But we do, we track it, and we probably have, I think, 20 a year that we turn away because we don't have the space in, we didn't open choice in those areas.
Right. And do we have a ballpark number for what that would be?
Dollar-wise?
Yeah.
100,000, I mean, just take the 5,000 and multiply it, yeah.
All right, thank you.
You're welcome.
Hey, Jim, I just wanted to comment on something. I do really appreciate the work that you and Barbara and Michael and Brittany do together. I think that's lost on, not lost, that's poor phrasing, but I don't think a lot of people recognize the work that, and the collaboration that goes on between yourselves and the municipal managers as well. There's not very many towns that can say that that's happening. And what we didn't mention during the hearing is that, you know, prior to January 23, we were looking at a $700,000 deficit.
Correct.
At this point. And I'm very happy to say that, you know, I sat at a Board of Selectmen meeting when Mr. Herbert was giving an update on the budget. And, you know, there's not too many towns that can say that their town manager is standing before the Board of Selectmen saying, this is our collective problem. It's not a school problem. So there's a lot of work that goes in behind the scenes and I think that yourself, Michael Herbert, and everybody needs to give credit for that. It's special.
Thank you.
Thanks, Paul.
Thank you, Paul.
Anybody else? Okay, do we have a motion to close the budget hearing?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Excellent, thank you. Moving forward, Mrs. Cohen, the.
Do we need a vote on the actual bottom line budget?
Oh, we need a vote, oh, okay.
I think it's important that we can move that then to the FinCom.
Okay, who wants to make a motion?
I mean.
All right.
There's that.
Yeah, just a little piece.
Yeah. Thank you for the reminder.
Yeah, the dollar amount is exact.
Who's got it?
Yeah.
You wanted to introduce to her from the presentation, is it?
Yeah.
Well, the motion should probably have.
Have the number.
Has the number, has to have the number.
Yeah, so let me go back to the budget. All right, so it's the $33,151,647, right?
Correct, yeah.
Okay. So I move to approve the superintendent's recommended budget of $33,151,647 as presented.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
There you go, we have a budget.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And in my final comments with regard to the budget, anyone who's, you know, in the community who's watching this or listening, certainly feel free to reach out and come in and have a conversation about the budget. I got a nice little note from Jim Hannah yesterday. We actually had a, I had a budget book dropped off to Mr. Hannah at his house. And he called and left a message.
Proactive.
I was at a meeting yesterday, he called, and what he wanted to say was, and this is a quote from, I think Kathy was in the office when Karen was telling me this morning, was that he would love the fact that the principals had a tremendous hand in developing the budget. And he wants them all to speak at town meeting. And I said, well, I prefer we don't, but, but Jim was really very thankful. And, you know, I think that's, I wanted to just express that, that he did call and outreach. And, you know, we were in a Zoom session, and Mr. Kendall had said, why don't we just get him a copy ahead of time? Because he always comes in and talks, and it was perfect, it was great, he had it. And he's presumably reading the whole thing, but.
Was he on the Zoom session too?
No, no.
He was not on the Zoom session.
He normally reaches out to Jim and comes in.
He reaches out to me and comes in.
And Jim's always like, well, it's online, he's like, I don't have a computer.
Exactly.
So I just like, well, there's no reason we can't send him a printed copy, you know. Send him my bind, send him my, send him my binder.
So he's got a binder. He has, he's all set.
Thank you for sharing that.
You're welcome.
Now for Mrs. Cohen, the Mendez academic study update. Thank you.
Thanks for having me, and I love that I was able to follow the budget presentation. It's like my third one this month in other districts. But I just took lots of notes and I was taking notes that I'm going to steal from that presentation and bring back, so thank you for that.
Ours was the most positive budget presentation.
That is a piece of it, which I already knew that, and already came up at a meeting I had earlier today because they asked me, now, how did Ashland do again? With Chapter 70, which was a little different in the other districts. But it's a lot of great ideas in there, so thank you. So I'm happy to be here. I have lots of slides I'm going to go through quickly because it's all of, you have it in the program study report. But just visually, I'm going to kind of go through some of them quickly and try to focus most of my time on the findings and recommendations. But it's in here, so if you want me to go back to a slide, I can do that. I really need to start again by thanking all of you, thanking Jim for the opportunity to participate in this and get to know Mendez School and be part of, and lead this project the last year. And I can't thank enough, and we have many members here in the audience who are part of it, but up here we have the committee members, they were great, they were just so great to work with, really dedicated, hardworking. This report is their report. And I'll speak to some of the points in here of where they really dove in and wrote the self-study reports and led to the findings that we had. But I couldn't have done this alone, and they were just outstanding right from the beginning. So thank you for all of their hard work. I had to start with my impressions of the school because I know a big part of the review is to come in and talk about what can we improve and, you know, strengths and weaknesses. And the most tangible, palpable thing that I noticed from being on the committee, from being in the school, from talking to students, talking to teachers, was I really feel like there's this culture of joy. I know it comes a lot from the leadership that you have in the building and in the district, but with the teachers that I talked to, one of the students actually, in our interviews, referred to it being joyful. That's one of the quotes when we asked what they liked about the school, and joy came out. And every teacher, I started the interviews and I asked them whether or not they, you know, what do you like about working here? You know, just try to break the ice, get to know them. And everyone, almost verbatim, I just couldn't imagine working anywhere else. Once we come here, we don't, never leave, we love it, it's so collegial, the kids are so happy, I love the culture. And I'm not making that up, every single person said that. So after, I wanted to start working there after I talked to the fifth person. So I'm like, oh, it sounds great. But I just want to emphasize that, and you don't have to go further than go to Twitter, which is where I borrowed all of these images. But you can see every day what's happening, but I felt it in the building, observations. And I really need to point that out, it's really an incredible school. I did the mid-review, mid-year review, so these were the beginning meetings that we had. And then we continued this fall and ended in December. And we met monthly for about one and a half to two hours. And we also had some full days, a full day where I went in to observe last spring and also full day went in to do interviews and student focus groups. And I'll speak to that as well later on in the presentation. So for, I know all of you are very familiar with what the purpose of the study was, but for anyone watching at home, really, it was given to me to evaluate, determine if the current programming that you have, which we have the two programs, multi, I refer to them as multi-age and single age though. In interviews, people refer to it, the neighborhood or multi-grade, but that's how I'll define it for this study. But whether or not it still aligns with the district goals around equitable opportunities and experiences for all of its students. So the group came up with this overarching question that was driving our work, whether or not do all students at the Mendez Elementary School have equitable access to a quality education based on best practices? Little history, there's a lot more in the program review about the multi-age program, but it started about 2000. The Assistant Superintendent Dan Leclerc at the time had attended a workshop, ASCD. I'm going to give a very short version of what happened. But basically, we had a delegation of members from Ashland that went to school to learn more. A delegation came here, and then you had the formation of a neighborhood study group and lottery to begin planning. So why did they, why were they looking at it at this, at that time? They wanted to provide alternative instructional approaches that were inquiry-based, provide more opportunities for hands-on, project-based learning. And they also were looking into research about how multi-age approach was viewed as a way to expose students to different grade levels and to meet individual needs of students. So that was the original goals. I put in some into the program review, you know, some of the documentation from many years ago and then some of the updates had come along. But that's a little background as to where it began here in Ashland. Couple of years later, there was a program review by Dr. Pravan, Pavan, I don't know how to say it. I've seen Pravan, yeah. And who was an expert in this area. And there were a lot of recommendations at the time just for some improvements. But from that time to now, there hasn't been really a comprehensive review until this group came together. And I tried to go through, and there's many more changes that have taken place just externally with, you know, MCAS and accountability measures, but also internally, our policy changes that have happened over the years, shifting of the school and grades. So we're looking at just a different environment now than we did in the beginning. And that's also led to part of this review to say, okay, is it, is it still equitable? Is it meeting our needs? We spent a lot of time at one of our first meetings. I thought it was really important that we had the same definition or as much as we could of understanding when we're talking about equity, what that really means. So we went through a few definitions, we went through an equity stances activity to look at different ways to look at equity, tried to come up with our own definition. And we did all of this before we started developing our questions for the study. This is one of the sample definitions that we looked at. And I really liked the last part of it, so I highlighted it there. But in the educational systems, that the vast majority of students have the opportunity to attain high-level skills regardless of their own personal socioeconomic circumstances. And a lot of that drove our work and our questions that we came up with. And so we came up with, for each group, so we had four groups, achievement, communication, programming, and social-emotional learning. And those were the four essential questions for each group. And then we jumped into, and I'm not going to read these through, but just to show you, these are the different. And so we came up with, for each group, so we had four groups, achievement, communication, programming, and social-emotional learning, and those were the four essential questions for each group, and then we jumped into, and I'm not gonna read these through, but just to show you, these are the different types of guiding questions that we were trying to get at. And did we answer all of these questions? We found out with some data, and I'll talk about that later, some we could answer easily, and some we probably need longitudinal data and over many years, and it was outside the scope of what we could do in this time, but we did get to the essence of these four categories. So the methodology, and we used, I probably am missing some in here, but our main focus, we looked a lot at the teacher surveys, specialist surveys, parent guardians, guardian surveys, and we also looked at achievement data, so you have the whole list here that helped us, so it was a mixture of that typical kinda quantitative data that you might find, but there was a lot of qualitative data, and really, after we had the surveys, and then we had the interviews and focus groups of the qualitative data, we saw themes right away that we could say, "Yes, this is a finding, this is, everyone's saying this, it's clear in the data." It was something very clear, and others that were probably grayer, or maybe we didn't have evidence across all the areas, but this was the range of documents and, that we talked, talked about and looked at in the meetings and spent the whole year on. All I did in the report, as well as here, I'm just pulling out a couple snapshots, just to give you a sense, and some highlights, I, in the program document, the review document, I tried to add in the elements that really related to equity, since that was our focus, but there was a lot more data that certainly, you know, we can get that to you, and Jim has access to all of it if you're interested, but there was lots of other data and questions that helped guide our, our answering of questions of program improvements. And so this was one, from teachers, in regards to equitable access to a quality education, to what degree would you keep the current state of programming with single age, or that's a single grade and multi-grade exactly as it stands right now? And, so of the teachers that completed this, you can see that for the one was the keep-as-is, and five was definitely change, and the multi-age was trending to, you know, keeping for those that answered, and then it was across the two to five of definitely changing something, or some changes in there. And then we did look at some of the responses that they gave us as well. We also were looking at curriculum and equity across, you can see, for the most part, they felt that they had access to similar classroom materials and resources, and I'm gonna talk on a couple slides later, there were a couple areas that we said, "Okay," you know, that, we had a couple themes that we need to work on, but definitely something that we can easily address. For teacher surveys, there were so many different comments that were in the surveys and also show up in the interviews, I really just tried to pull a couple ideas, just so you could see, that some gave examples of, "Yes, we think it's equitable," or "It's more equitable than it was in the past," and others that said, "No, I still don't think it's, I think it's inequitable." And so we did have a range, it wasn't like you had all of one, everyone saying, "Yes, it's all of, you know, one idea or the other." But there were a lot, in the, in the statements, there were a lot of themes that we could draw out and draw some conclusions that would really help us out. The student focus groups, I mean, I wish we had scheduled more time, because they were amazing, and I, and thank Mike as well, because he was in there taking notes as I was chatting with the, with the kids, but they, they were amazing. One question that we asked, so we had the single-age representatives in one group, and we had the multi-age representatives in the other group, and we asked them all the same questions, which is in the report of what we asked them, and, "How do you think your experience in a program's different from the other programs?" So, you can see some of the same themes showed up around field trips, or the sense from single age that, "Oh, they have more projects," they were very concerned about the binders, they thought, you know, they had these binders, they were concerned for the multi-age group, I don't, that was a big thing, they said, "Yes, the binders," there's a lot, so they, they were cute, but there were a few things that they note, that they noticed, and when we talked to the multi-age, that I, really, that first one was telling, "I don't know what the traditional program is like." It's like two walls, we're, we're doing our thing over here, and that came up, the separation between the two, and they also reiterated the theme that we've heard before around it being a really strong community in the multi-age program, and they really liked being recognized in that program, and they also liked that they would meet their own level, so they, they strongly, the multi-age loved being in the program, both students groups did. Parent surveys, this played into kind of trying to get at communication with parent surveys, and also why, you know, "Why are you choosing each program?" And there, there's probably more data that I couldn't put in this presentation of what they said, but we identified that academic reasons, social reasons were the two top reasons why parents would choose either program. And we asked them about communications, because we wanna make sure we keep improving that, and to what degree do you feel that they were informative, and you can see that the five is that it was informative, so that was more positive trending on that end, but we also got specific feedback that you'll see in our recommendations later on. So then, once we had all the data and we had our questions, at every one of the meetings, there was time for each of the subcommittees who were working in smaller groups to come together, and I gave them a template, and you can see them, they're in the report, so that's what, for the most part, what they wrote, I just did a little bit of edits to kinda bring it all together, but that, those were their reports and their work on the data that they found in the self-study reports. So what I did is just pull up some strengths that I found across, I'll dive into more detail later on, because they show up later on in our findings and recommendations, but there, there are plenty of strengths, so I know we're, we focused a lot on making sure we came up with some recommendations and program improvements, but, and that was a piece of our work, but tons, tons of strength showed up in all the areas. Overall, we felt the achievement was strong in the school, a lot of talk, a theme of the intro of the new assessments of iReady, on the impact, the positive impact that will have. The programming, parents have options, people really like that, they felt overall there were equitable supplies, and we've already started to make some movement on the common field trips and addressing that inequity that had shown up in the past. For SEL, they, many people talked about responsive classroom, being effective and wanting to expand that, and also the success of work with SEL competencies, community building, and they really, a strong theme was that having the positive role models in the multi-age program had a great impact for their students and behavior. And for communications, we already have had, made, made lots of improvements in the communications area, something they've been working on, they have translations, interpreters, it's on the web, they've worked on balancing students on IAPs, so there's been a lot of strengths and positive movement. We also identified weaknesses, and that's gonna lead into some of our findings and recommendations. We, in achievement, was more challenging than we thought it would be, and looking at some of the data, because there wasn't, there's a lack of common assessment data over multiple, sorry, over multiple years, there were some for one year or partial in the year that we were in, and there wasn't necessarily a formal mechanism at the time to track and store data, but use of iReady and some of the assessments that we have recently put in place will, will help with that. And we noted there's disparity in achievement across both programs, I'll show you that info in a minute, and there was perceived inequity of materials for social studies resources at the multi-age, subgroups in each program did not mirror the general population, you kind of see that theme show up in multiple subgroups. Limited opportunities for social interactions of students between the two groups affected SEL, and the disparity in enrichment resources like field trips or projects were expressed, and you saw that in some of the quotes of the students. In communications, the second-grade teachers lacked clarity in what to communicate, we had a survey that asked second-grade teachers about, you know, "What have you been told?" And so we have some recommendations, just to make sure we have more consistency in what's being told families, and there was disparity in L students and students on free and reduced lunch between the programs. So, I have the ending here breaking up into five key findings and five categories, and then are a series of recommendations that come out of our work. So the first category of findings is related to students, and the demographic data clearly indicated that the subgroups, such as the English language learner, special education students, and economically disadvantaged students are underrepresented, underrepresented in the multi-age program based on the overall school demographic data. So this is one snapshot, there's other data that's in the report, but this shows that it's not on par, but there has been some positive trends, especially in the special ed area, it did not look that equal in the past from what we had discussed, so that's one area that we're gonna be looking at.
So, Maureen, that was one of the questions I was, I was gonna ask, is, is this from, is this last year's data?
Yes, this past year's, yep.
It has been, I know we've, we knew about the, that difference, and have been, you know, making concerted efforts, so it sounds like-
Yep, so that's an area, it's still less-
Not one area.
It's, that's one area, we've, there's been efforts to balance it, and so we'll continue.
And you have some data that indicates that that's been working?
Correct.
Great.
Yep.
I have a, sorry.
Sure.
Go back for a second, on the EL-
No, just your mic does this back.
Oh, sorry. On the EL student population, did you look at this, not just in the current program right now, but in previous years, because just anecdotally, from what I've heard, there are certain populations in the town that, as a group, sort of used to pick one versus the other, and now they're sort of switching, and so I didn't know if you looked at multiple points in time of this, or was it more consistent, or is it just a snapshot?
It's more of a snapshot, and anyone, who was, any of you on that committee, subcommittee, I mean, feel free to jump in too, but it was more of a snapshot, that is what we were looking at for our data.
Definition of EL students?
Yeah.
With what you're describing instead, I think?
Yeah.
Right, and plus, you know, over the time from when the neighborhood started to now, just the increase in population of those students has-
And, like America Bolard didn't exist when it started.
Right.
And that's a pretty diverse community that I think had been making one choice for neighborhood at the beginning, and now is sort of making a different one, so it'd also be sort of interested to see within the EL students, the generalized, you know, we have three or four pretty big demographic groups of Russian, Portuguese, Indian, and what would you say number four is?
Well, actually, yeah. Go ahead, Mike, come on.
Yeah, absolutely.
Yeah, I mean, it's important to note that, um, like-
Sorry.
An English language learner is not necessarily a student that speaks a second language, so we do have a population of students that are bilingual, that doesn't necessar- necessarily constitute them as an English learner. So I do think there are, you know, large pockets of students who are, who do speak Russian or speak Indian dialects, but that does not necessarily constitute them as an English learner.
Gotcha, okay.
So, I think that's important to designate that.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
But, but no, like no subgroups like that, we didn't look at it in those terms, yeah.
And also, one thing that we found, it's that in this whole process, sometimes we'd, we'd come across data, and then we'd have another question, and then another question that came up, so some of that, a little bit, and we tried to be careful to not go too far, you know, try to keep to where we are parameters and scope, but there also, in each self-study, there were those questions in there, "What could you look at in the future?" Or what are, you know, if you wanna dive into some of these areas in the future to find out more, some of that came to light, I'd be really interested in learning about, you know, that demographic and see where we're at too. Other findings with students, students are really happy in, in general, we talked about with the culture of the school, but also in each of the programs, when we asked them, I mean, they and teachers and reporting, so basically, I tagged the different data, where we got the evidence from, but they didn't wanna change, they were happy where they were at in both. Also, it came up in some conversations too, about movement in between programs, that once you're in the multi-age program, it's difficult, not that anything's impossible, but it's difficult to transition in and out, or if you have population that might be coming into the school, so the more transient population comes in, they're not gonna be going in mid, you know, cycle into the multi-age, so that could influence some of the data as well. Key finding, number two, is around achievement, and so we know that MCAS, I'm sure you have the same mantra here that we have in the district's I work in, is not the tell-all of everything, right? It's just one data point of many data points that we look at, and we wanna look at the whole student, but we did also wanna incorporate achievement and see where we're at, and when we looked at the assessment data, the benchmark state assessments indicated that students in the multi-age program on average are outperforming the students in the single-age program. There's a lot of discussion and agreement that some of the factors, like socioeconomic factors, other demographic factors, could be impacting that data as well. That would be, if you wanted to get at that, that's a much deeper dive into why, just like it is anywhere, the more, now that you have your iReady and benchmark data, and, and you have more assessments, and you start to intervene and have really strong RTI programs that you're developing, that's where you're really, you'll get to get into the weeds of that, but it is a fact that the data, there was disparity in those two groups, it was pretty clear. This is one small snapshot, there was more that was in the report related to that. Key finding related to culture, collaborations, teachers and students in both programs stated they wished there were more opportunities for whole-school-grade level collaboration with teachers and students, they love the school activities they have, they love the times when they can come together, that came from the students, but definitely, there, it came across in every conversation that there isn't enough collaboration taking place with the teachers and the students. In the multi-age, there was some specific data for that group, there was definitely a strong culture of community in the multi-age group, there was perception of less behavioral challenges in the multi-age group, that predominantly came from our specialists, that was one of the questions we had, and it came out that they felt that, they thought maybe it was the fifth-grade role models, sense of community, and that they noticed that there were perceptions of different behaviors, and the fifth-grade role models was a strength, and that really came out too from teachers, but also from students talked a lot about that. And physical layout came up, and certainly, I recognize this in my observation right away, in being in the building, that it's a strength that the multi-age is all there, and they get to work together and collaborate, and they have this community, so it's a strength for them, but the weakness that came up is, people said, "I never see that person in the building, and we don't get to interact, and I don't even know who everybody is," and that came from students and from teachers. Key finding around curriculum, that there are more, and many, many people said this, there are more similarities than differences in the curriculum differentiation, instructional practice in the two programs in two thousand, well, I should say two thousand nineteen, sorry now, than there were ten years ago, such as common curricular resources, increased project-based learning in the single-age program, and differentiated approaches in both programs. So if you think back to the start, there was a real big difference from what I've heard, I wasn't here, of this was project-based learning all the way, you might not see it as much in the single age, and here we're saying, teachers in multi-age will report, we don't have as much of the project-based learning as we had in the beginning, and you have single age saying, "We're doing project-based learning as well." And while there may be a little bit more, as the students were reporting, like they had more projects, I think, but there, it's definitely, you don't see the big difference between the two, and that came out from multiple conversations and data. Key finding, number five, communications, so we clearly, through surveys and talking to people, there are misconceptions about how both programs operate, including how students, families choose and are placed in programs still exist, so there's, we knew we were gonna have a perception problem, not everyone would have, you know, people, perception though sometimes is reality, but we, we found that there were certain areas that we could probably communicate differently or work on to improve, and we have some recommendations related to that. Despite positive efforts to increase communication, more reach to underrepresented subgroups still needs to be made, and grade-two teachers lacked the clarity in the differences between the programs and needed consistent messaging, and I referenced that earlier as a weakness. So we have eleven recommendations, these, we grouped them into categories, so I'm just gonna go as fast as I can through it, I know you've read the report, but on the left-hand side, I kinda have what maybe the problem was, or what we've discovered, and then some recommendations and to consider and think about. So while everyone said having two programs could be viewed as a strength, because parents have options, the self-selective nature drives the inequities around the multi-age program, many people talked about how it was the self-selection of the program that was driving that, so we had come up with some recommendations. You can increase communication to underrepresented populations, provide specific outreach to the populations, incorporate randomized selection of students as part of the selection process, which we noted in the report would also lead to other issues, or consider acceptance protocol from opt-in to an opt-out was something that was suggested to consider. Apparently, everything is a one in my, I don't know what's about that, but it's all good, so, these are all your first priorities. In two thousand, eighteen, nineteen, action has been taken to address, they've already started working on inequities that came up with field trip opportunities between the two programs, there, in the past, there were different field trips, and people felt it wasn't, it wasn't- There, in the past, there were different field trips and people felt it wasn't, it wasn't equitable that you would have, multi-age would be doing this, but I'm in the same grade, but I, I'm doing this and I can't do that and why not? It came up in lots of conversations. So that Mike and Claudia have already done great work to have movement in that area. So just, you know, encourage them to continue to do that because it came up in conversations as an issue. So not everyone was aware that they were making this movement. And some teachers had concerns, it came up at the committee meetings that maybe there weren't clear learning objectives that were being met by some field trips, even though we always ask for that. But just to keep focusing on that. Inequity in social studies resources for multi-age program, so when we're talking about resources, there is the perception in multi-age that they did not have the same social studies books as in the single age, the same number and had to share. So that came up from them and concerned by multi-age teachers that current curriculum resources and testing hinder time for their project-based learning. Some of them reported that they felt that because we have, oops, because we have common resources, that we don't have as much time or because we have to test now, we don't have as much time. And teachers indicated that vertical curriculum teaming was helpful and they, so that came a lot from the single age teachers. And they shared in the interviews that they really liked when, that was one avenue to come together and maybe have more consistency across. And so you could consider developing a plan to purchase some additional social studies resources over time. Because they are not all using it at the same time, they can share. So if we're thinking, you know, financially, they can share, but because they noted it as an inequity, it could be something you could work to address a little bit. I would think that providing project-based learning professional development for not just, you know, the multi-age teachers, for all teachers, is something that can help that skill. Because that will help you take these standards and through project-based learning, incorporate those standards into your teaching and having deeper inquiry for all of our students. So that's something that could be considered in the future. And just continue the great work that's been taking place with the vertical curriculum review teams that many people noted were helpful. In regard to student leadership, there's already a lot of great things. I noted it was great to work with the students, but this notion that fifth grade students and being role models in that multi-age. But it wasn't, many noted, well, why can't we have that for single age? Why can't we have that for everyone? And so really looking for, well, how can we make that happen? Certainly that's possible. And so just looking for more opportunities to have fifth graders be role models, active role models across the whole school. And I know, I know Mike's already doing that, but just try to brainstorm other ways because it had come up as something that a number of people talked about. So you could have fifth grade buddy programs. He clearly, when I was in the student group with Mike, clearly he's asking for the student leaders to give input. And they were ready, they were like, I have ideas. He was like, let's do it, let's put that in place. And so, you know, fostering that, because we were talking to fifth graders, like fostering those ideas and continuing that will also help with the school community and just capturing that student leadership. For communications, this was a big one, there are lots of recommendations that came out of this group. And so while there's a variety of mechanisms for communicating about the two options, there was still a lack of understanding by some stakeholders about the programs. So to help with the grade two, you could provide a fact sheet that they can have at spring conferences to ensure consistency. Maybe offering EL-specific options night with interpreters on hand. Provide more opportunities for collaboration between grade two and three. I know we're always looking for that and it's always hard to collaborate across schools, but maybe if they were more familiar with the programs, they would be able to speak about that. And offer options night in actual neighborhoods that might have underrepresented populations, provide dinner was one of the suggestions that came from the committee. And have grade two teachers observe at Mendez too, would give them a sense of the programming. In regard to assessment, we already noted there was a lack of comprehensive longitudinal assessment data, but I think we're already working in this district to improve that. So by establishing a system of data collection around achievement and have it be around both programs, then you'd be able to have even more data that you can look at and analyze. And a piece of that you want to make sure is in there is having those subgroup demographic indicators need to be part of that analysis. And in order to do this well, providing PD to teachers on the data analysis cycle is something that is in a one-shot deal. It's something that usually takes many years to have them develop that craft. For instructional staff, we clearly have already talked about, there's a need to increase cross-program collaboration. And so a few ideas, just increasing peer observations across the programs. You can do that in numerous ways, you know, just say, this is observation day, sign up, get some subs in and, or do learning walks with teachers. And there's lots of ways that you can do peer observations. But they also were really asking for establishing more formal structure, structures for cross-program collaboration. And so that was a piece that we could put, look for new ways to put in cross-program collaboration of the teachers. And also provide opportunities for teachers to move grades and move programs. There, what was, I found really unique about this school compared to other schools that I've worked with, I mean, teachers come in and they stay and they've been, they've been teaching the same thing or the same program for so long. There are so many strengths in these pockets of teachers who are in this program or here or in this grade. And just by movement or someone who wants to change or that cross-collaboration, you're just going to be spreading that wealth of experience by doing that. So it's just something to consider that can be helpful. Differentiated practices, various teaming options, so I haven't talked about this yet, but it came up in the teacher interviews. There were different teams in the single age groups in the interviews that talked about having flexible groupings or having the ability and autonomy with, they loved that they were given permission and, and supported by the administration to say, hey, can we, the two of us work together? Or can we move kids this way? And they felt that when they were given that flexibility in the single age group, they were able to have more flexible groups and meet students better where they were at, at different times for EOL or math. And that, that was a piece that was a little bit similar with the multi-age. And just continuing to foster those opportunities and flexible groups for those differentiated practices. And continued PD support in implementation by ready and other assessments in how to intervene when then you see an issue, then how do we intervene? And I know they've been working on that, but to continue that. A need exists to increase student interactions across the two programs, we said that. One, continue those school-wide activities that are well-received. Many people mentioned, okay, potential times to increase student interactions would be in specials or before school or at recess. And I'm sure there's certain, certainly many other areas, but those were the ones that were referenced. They talked about right in the beginning of school, we like that we can get together. And in consideration of a new building and new school to just think about, it's great to have the multi-age together, but you don't want them in a wing or something so separate that you don't have that physical proximity and interaction with the rest of the school. And so that was my recommendation. In regard to SEL, continued work in improving SEL skills of the teachers. And that's never, that's always going to take many years. And the responsive classroom training, multiple teachers mentioned that as successful and felt that that would help them with the community building. So we knew it was very strong in that multi-age, because that's a big focus of that group and they have, you know, these morning meetings. But now that we have responsive classroom, you're seeing it in all the classrooms and that will improve. And the school SEL committee that we have, that we talked about, expanding instruction in Castle's five competencies, which I'm sure at some point you've heard about. But I know there's already been work, but continuing that will help to support the students in that area. One thing I was thinking about when I was trying to kind of come to the, the end here, I was thinking about your vision and moving forward and, you know, what you want out of this report. And so I know you've been in your strategic planning process, I don't know if you finished it yet for the next, next round, I know you've been in it, not yet, sorry. You've been in it.
We'll talk about that next.
But, right? But with your future strategic initiatives for the district or planning for a potential new building, it's recommended that you think about your mission, purpose, vision for students, which you do in that process. But with the findings, recommendations here and thinking about how they fit into that vision. It was twenty years ago when this, these programs were developed and there's just great things going on. They're really, there's in the school, no matter what, if someone were to ask me, like if a student's in any of those classes, they're going to excel. Okay, so we, you know, it's, it's great, right? But think about how do you want to tweak it? How do you want to change it? What, how do you want to grow it? I mean, that's going to be up to you, but I think when you hone in on your vision, that's going to help drive it. Or if you bring in your stakeholders in the building. So I was able to talk to pockets of teachers and observe, but really just getting them around the table with that vision, that would be my final recommendation. So I pulled these awesome pictures up and I wanted to put more because there were so many good ones on, on the internet. But I, I just want to thank you for the opportunity, it was, really was a pleasure, it was a privilege. I just love working with administrative team and the teachers and the students were great. And I'll take any questions, I don't know if I'll have any answers, but happy to take questions.
Well, thank, thank you though for dedicating your time and helping us with this. It was a long, long project that you took on, so we, we really appreciate that.
Thank you.
And you did excellent work. I sat in on the committee and, you know, you're always focused and handling, you know, the different sensitivities in the room. We all come from a, a different perspective, which was the point.
Yep.
And keeping us on track, so you, you did a great job, thank you.
Thank you, appreciate that.
So I'm not, because I did sit on, I'm going to again, open it up to you guys for questions and discussion and this, we're not voting on anything tonight, but this is an opportunity to dig a little deeper.
No, I, I want to, I want to thank you again, Maureen, as well. I think when this started, I think there was a lot of misperceptions also of why. And as the chair of the building committee, you know, one of the major factors was, and we're going through the, the process now with the MSBA. And your educational program drives the building that we're going to be moving into and, and what the MSBA will allow us to do. And, and because we have something unique at the school, this was, this document was, was needed. And it's going to be a tremendous value for us going forward in, in the process with the MSBA. So thank you for the work that the, the committee did because that's, that's going to be crucial for, for us, you know, having a successful project going forward, so thank you.
And I've been on building projects before too, so I understood that element of it. And even though we were looking at equity, we knew we were going to just discover other information. And that's why I wanted to make sure we had, you know, what are strengths and weaknesses, opportunities and threats? And just, you know, go a little bit outside our scope, away from equity if other things came up to just say, hey, this is something that we could address or consider or ask more questions about. So thank you, glad that will be helpful.
Dr. Cohen, thank you so much, like it was so detailed and I think this is very academic undertaking and, you know, some people might glaze over when they read this, but like the way you presented it actually, like especially in your slides, because I did try to read the forty-page document and that was a little much. No, the slides were great.
Maureen's very thorough.
I would say this is forty-three.
Dissertation number two.
Right, yes. Thorough is.
And I'm like a data person, but no, you did a fantastic job. I would like, you know, when you talk about that next step and Jim and Paul know this, that I, I really want to be looking at the, more the socioeconomic drivers and the location of our students. And, you know, what neighborhood, like the neighborhoods our kids come from can tell you a lot about where their family is and, you know, looking at extra data points of the education of the parents and what their careers are now. And how that informs the kids' outcomes and sort of extracting that out of the equation of any scoring, whether it's I-ready or MCAS. And trying to get at, like remove the socioeconomic factor and really see what the school factor is.
I just add my thanks as well to you, to Lori, to all the members of the committee that spent a lot of time on it. I felt like this is a, a program analysis that we've had to do for a few years, we've talked about it. I'm glad we've done it. I thought the, some of the hard data points in terms of where our students are and who's in the different programs is really helpful to see in black and white. The fact that those programs are not necessarily both equally representative of all populations in the school. I, I did have one question for you and, and so one thing that struck me when I actually read the whole report, I may fifty-page reports, I'll read all of, but I did read all of it. Was there were a relatively small number of, I think, staff members in the neighborhood program who had completed the survey. And just wondering whether that skews any of the data points at all. I, I tried and I know in some places you were able to say, and so this is where multi-age versus single grade, you know, sort of responded in a certain way. But if, I can see Mr. Kyra's looking to jump in, but I'm just curious whether or not there's, there's anything in this that.
He may know the answer to that.
I know.
I mean, we know it's not necessarily if we were doing a dissertation, it's not statistically, you know, we, if we were doing that, then we probably would keep going back to make sure that we had everyone.
Right.
So for me, I relied more on some of the, what people said and those trends that you would come across. So some of the quantitative data that came out of the, and also the teacher survey too, you know, I wouldn't say, okay, because of this, we should do this.
Yeah, and I recognize there's both qualitative and quantitative stuff there that kind of points in the same direction, but I'm curious as to your thoughts.
I, I just think it's important to point out that when we, we think about that particular survey, we're talking about eight teachers in the neighborhood, two of whom were on the committee. So that really left us only with six and then I think three teachers did it. So it was fifty percent of the folks that we expected to do the survey completed it. And then when you think about the other teachers from the single graded population, it was about the same percentage. So you're looking at similar percentages in, in, in the participation rate of the survey itself. So while the numbers are low, the percentages are there, so that, I think that's important to note.
Yeah, I appreciate that, Mike, I don't, I don't think that's.
Can you stay, Mike? Can you stay at the mic?
Sure.
Just stand there, there's just no question.
Yeah, because she just wants to look at you.
I think Kathy has a question for you.
Well, I figured you were right there. So like what are you doing about field trips then? What, what are some of your thoughts then or what have you, like to be equitable? Are you thinking like having both programs go on the same field trip?
So, um, we, we introduced this concept this fall when we talked to our teachers in the very first day of school. In terms of the fact that our planning for field trips now need to be done in a similar manner that our teachers, that our, that our teachers in the multi-age program are, are teaching social studies. So what they do is they go thematically. So one year they'll do a third grade, the third grade theme, and then the fourth grade theme and the fifth grade theme. We've asked our teachers to collaborate where they're now picking field trips together. So we're asking the fifth grade team to work with a member from the, the, the multi-grade program to pick a field trip that everybody will do. So by the time students leave the Mendez school within their three years, every student will have participated in the same exact trip. Now, the, the, the multi-grade program will choose to do the third grade trip this year, the fourth grade trip this year and the fifth grade trip this year.
And they would do it with that, with the other program?
No, they can't, no, we don't have the numbers to be able to support that for these different places where we go. But we've told our single graded population that they need to be agreeing with the multi-grade, that they're taking a trip three years in a row now every time. So the cycle will continue to go and we'll be able to move through it. And that will really be starting in earnest next year and, and we'll be able to, to move it positively. So it's going to be a change for folks.
Yeah.
But I, I think that we've also said, you need to work together to present this with a trip that is going to be beneficial for all the kids. And if, and if the fifth grade decides to take two trips, then that year, if, when the neighborhood is, or when the multi-grade is doing the fifth grade trips, those kids will take two trips. So it, it can, it can happen like that as well.
Okay, I just thought maybe that was an opportunity where they'd come together.
Yeah, it's a great opportunity for, but, but.
But no, I meant to get, yeah.
Yeah.
So are you doing, like what, you have, what are your other ideas about the students, you know, how they were saying, I wish we could see the other kids?
So that's, you're almost getting a sneak preview to the upcoming school improvement plan that we presented in May.
Oh, okay. Should I wait till then?
But that's, but that's something that our, that our side council has been talking a great deal about, is how we can incorporate more opportunities, not only for our student population to get together, but also for our teaching population to get together. But in, in, you know, from the moment I walked into the Mendez school, when I, when I had entry-level meetings, when named principal, everybody talked about their favorite events at Mendez being those that, where the entire community was together. It's a challenge, it's not an easy thing to do. But, you know, we, we've, we've worked and been able to continue doing some of those great traditions. And, you know, with, with Mrs. Bennett and I together, we can work with our staff to try and get more. But it's, it does present itself a, a challenge because there are other things that we need to do, like a schedule and, and make sure that.
Yeah, right.
to do, like a schedule and make sure that we're, we're keeping our eye on the academic portion too. So we are finding the time for those community events, but it's, I will say it's easier said than done, but we have to, we have to make it work.
And they've made a lot of, you know, now they're on a school-wide master, master schedule and so there's been a lot of things that the administration has done over the last couple of years that, you know, would need to have been placed so he can and they can make these things. Because now they're all on the same schedule regardless which program, you're all doing the same thing at the same time and things like that, which is, which is key.
Just quickly before I sit down, I, you all were able to thank Dr. Cohen publicly, but I want to do that as well. This is a topic that was really important and it's a hot button issue with a lot of people and it presents itself with some emotions and it's charged and it's something that people care deeply about in this community. And to be able to bring Dr. Cohen in, to be able to lead this committee, every single meeting was led with great, a great deal of professionalism and she, she was excellent to work with and we were very lucky to have her as part of our team. So just thank you on behalf of all the students and parents and community members and our teaching staff for the hard work that you put into this to, to present us with really a truly comprehensive assessment of our programming. So much appreciated.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Thank you. What else?
Any other questions?
Yes, please, Maureen, of course.
I'm feeling very passionate about children and education tonight.
Just tonight?
Hopefully every day.
Just tonight?
I think you have a long career of that.
First, I want to say thank you too. And it's kind of nice to follow doctors or work with doctors as opposed to visit them. Well, I appreciate having worked with Dr. Cohen and certainly Dr. Kyra on a daily basis. And last night, what I want to really say is something that I think probably really struck me last night. And first of all, Dr. Kyra did a tremendous job last night of talking to second grade parents about the two programs and really how they've become much more similar through the years as opposed to any distinct differences between the two. But the thing that struck me was, we had over a hundred people there talking and thinking about education. And it's hard to get people out doing that. We get people out sometimes in large numbers to vote for education, but in terms of talking about the nitty-gritty and the meat of it and what a beautiful thing to have those people so involved in their students' education and, hey folks, that's like the number one way to guarantee your child's successes. Let them know how important going to school every day and what they do every day is so important. Letting them know that, that's really how we make the changes. And so I just want to say that thank you to all of you as well for, you know, encouraging that we take a look at this because talking and thinking deeply about education is, there's nothing more important and it really makes, drives good education. So thank you, everyone.
Thanks, Claudia.
And I'll echo what you said about the options night and how, how that's progressed. I have a fifth grader and a third grader and I've been through it twice and I remember last year, I don't know, probably had sixty, seventy people or maybe it was a hundred, and they were all staring at each other, so how do we make this decision? Right? And it was presented in a, in a, in a much more succinct way than it has been and, and really, you know, to, to some of the things that were mentioned in the program, I think there's already been a lot of strides from the communication front and, and really there's a, there, you know, I was happy to see the quote that there's a lot more similarities and differences because there really is, like, I have a student in both, so, so I know that. And quite frankly, the one in the traditional program is doing more projects this year so far than the one in the, in the multi-age. So, you know, I think, I think it's, I think it's great.
More questions? Next steps.
I have a suggestion that kind of just popped into my head, something that could be maybe not in an entire school, but each grade coming together from the multi-age and single age, so have the fifth graders and fifth graders all come together, fourth and fourth, third and third. I was in neighborhood. I loved it. What we did, I remember, it was in neighborhood in itself, but we used a bunch of recycled materials. I forget what it was called, but we made like pulleys, we learned about ramps and ladders and we had to build a machine that would do something. So if you could have something along the lines of a project-based, grade-wide day where they come together, you split them up into groups randomized, not by if they're in neighborhood or not, and that would be something both educational, project-based, coming together and almost have it as like a challenge. Ours was who could build the best system and have it be most effective. It was really cool because we were just using like plastic or cardboard tubes and a little race car to make it do something. So if you wanted something like that, I, that's something I remember very vividly. I thought it was so much fun. It was a way that we could interact with, I did it in third grade, so a way for us to interact with the fourth and fifth graders, but if you wanted to do something grade-wise, that could be an idea.
I was going to say.
Nicole doesn't need them, believe me.
And we did something similar in our, in the district I work in where we actually did it like K-12 and we have two like maker days or design challenge days. And so we did one, I'm trying to think when it was, a couple of months ago and it was little pigs and they had to build houses and that would stay up with certain types of materials. So we've done a couple of that, but we did it across the school, every school on, on one day, which was pretty neat. Reminds me of what you're talking about.
Or even like a design a business type thing. That would be cool too.
Maybe that's a community service project you can work with Dr. Kyra on.
Thank you. Anybody else? So next steps, I mean, is it, is there more for this committee to discuss or is the administration going to toss these findings around for a while?
So, so, good question, right? So I think, as Mr. Kendall talked a little bit about, as we, we progress through the school building project and we're starting to, to write our educational profile, I think it's going to be imperative the school committee take an opportunity to dive a little more deeply into the report and then have an opportunity, even if it's to bring Dr. Cohen back at a summer workshop or wherever, to have a further conversation.
You want to come back, Dr. Cohen?
Of course she does. Yeah, I know, right? Especially in the summer, right?
No, national may do that.
So as we progress, I, I think we need to have some really in-depth conversation about the programming. We have to have conversation with the leadership at Mendez as well as the teaching staff at Mendez. And this is just a great framework for us to begin that conversation. As Maureen said, it's been twenty years since we've really looked at the program itself and the differences that exist today compared to the twenty years ago are much smaller than they were and the reason why the program was developed previously. So I, I think it's critically important that, that we do, you know, put it aside for a little bit, read it, digest it, and then have further conversation as it relates to potential building process that we're going through. But then also looking at, I couldn't agree more about the vision piece. Making sure that the vision of the program itself does tie back into the vision that we all have for the community and the district. And we are close with the, with the blueprint vision and the mission and we're working on, you know, the next iteration of that. But, that being said, you know, you're challenging me to now try to figure out how to, how to blend the, the vision of, of the Mendez School, if you will, into the vision of the district. And to ensure that if we're making strategic decisions for hires and the spending of our resources across the district, that they're compatible with one another and that if we're going to invest in the continuation or the expansion of, or whatever it might be in terms of the next Mendez, are we putting our dollars where they need to go? And so there, there are lots of implications to having conversation and there's financial resources that exist that we have to then reallocate. So I think it's a great summer topic in terms of in-depth conversation. I don't see us making, or anyone asking you to make any decisions with regard to programming in the very near future. I think it is going to have to be a conversation as we move forward with the MSBA process, though. That's, it's going to be critical as we go through the process.
And Jim, I know you and I have talked about this, but just the timing and when we kind of have to have idea of what we want the building to look like from a curricular perspective. And again, that assumes a lot of things we don't know yet in terms of what feasibility studies will look like, but ballpark of timing when we kind of have to make a decision on this stuff.
I would say the next eighteen months would be where we really need to be settling down into what the, the next makeup, if you will. If, if the direction goes towards having a new building and the feasibility study shows that, that we need a new Mendez, which we don't know, that's what the feasibility study is for. If it states that, yes, this should be a consideration, part of the design, the schematic design is creating the space, right? So that's, that's in the next eighteen months. So the dialogue needs to continue for those eighteen months, but within the next eighteen months, so 2020, you know, by June probably of 2020, a decision has to be made as to what we're doing. So that, that piece of the project can be included in the overall schematic design and the budget. So, Mr. Kendall's part of that group too, so.
Yeah, so, so as far as timing, they, you know, we're at the end stages of trying to select a project manager. We'll move into a designer selection phase, so that'll probably take us into the middle to late summer. Then there'll be data collection and we, the first, first of all is data collection and review of things and also then going through, MSB forces you to go through what are all the options. And we have to look at what, what would a renovation look like, what would all these different things look like? And, you know, honestly, you know, it's most likely a, a new, new structure just based on the, the building and a grade I think knows that, but we still have to go through those things. And so by the time this becomes part of a design conversation, it's, it's probably minimum nine months out from now, but, but, but again, we have time, but I think to Jim's point, don't lose track of it, think about it, read it, you know, review it again in another month on your own and then be ready because we'll probably, when we talk about the, our educational plan for the project, we'll be looking back at this, we'll probably come back here for feedback on this and what you'd want to include in an educational plan. So, so I would, I would say from, from our perspective, you know, we'll, we'll probably pick up the conversation in six to nine months, I would imagine.
So if it's, if it's status quo till then or nine, for the next nine to eighteen months, are there any shorter-term decisions? Like, when's, when's the lottery?
We don't have a lottery, or well, I take that back. We didn't this year.
Registration was today.
On the bottom of my head, I believe that the lottery is March 27th, I think, if it's necessary.
If it's necessary. So, but are we moving forward with folks still self-selecting and doing it that way?
At this point, I think that it would be, it would be too late to, or to make some sort of change like that for this year. I mean, we had our options planned last night.
Right.
Option forms are due on March 15th.
Gotcha.
So.
And I, I think more, more that can be done as far as communication and collateral that can be shared and those kind of things that, you know, I think the comment, self-selecting can mean a couple of different things. It means, hey, somebody's choosing to go in, but I think it's also self-selecting and just the type of people who are choosing that. And that's, comes back to making sure that everyone has the information in a digestible, meaningful way for them. And I think we can work on that to make sure that even though they're self-selecting in the, that it's not the, what some people might consider a negative self-selection where it's only these, this demographic or these type of people that are choosing it, but other people are choosing it because everybody has information that they are comfortable with and understand.
Right. So, I mean, to your question about what potentially could or could not happen or, you know, in reviewing the report and the recommendations, I certainly have, you know, challenged Mike and Claudia to, to think about the building itself and think about the makeup of the programming and are there opportunities that exist to, to collaborate more and/or to make some adjustments within just the makeup of the teaching staff? I think it's something that we should be considering and looking at, has nothing to do with the impact in terms of the actual process of getting into the multi-age programming or the single age programming. But what it does is have an opportunity to potentially, you know, look at the, the teaching and instructional practices as well as taking an opportunity to, to potentially have that movement that really some teachers, you know, again, might benefit from teaching in that setting as well that we currently have within the building. So there are things in there we should, we need to be looking at from an administrative standpoint.
Right.
Which we will do.
Right.
But it, but it doesn't necessarily have to come to this body to make those decisions.
Correct, yeah. Yes, there are a lot of bigger picture things that need to be figured out that will take some time. And I guess I'm just thinking if there are any sort of shorter-term things like, like what Paul said, some outreach maybe to some of those communities that are underserved. I don't even know if that's the right word, but if there's a reason why there's, there's not that balance in both programs, it would be great to.
That's what I was thinking, like the EL population sticks out.
Oh, and free and reduced lunch as well, yeah.
I think we have the opportunity for some quick, easy wins, right? We have some things that we can do and that we can incorporate immediately. When looking through some of those recommendations, there is no reason that we cannot get a cheat sheet of facts about the two programs and the similarities and differences for our grade-two teachers. We can get that, we can get that done like this. It's already done. It's, it's been, it's been presented to parents last evening. So we can just put those things in a nice format for our grade-two teachers to have next, in the next two weeks when conferences are coming up. So we can get the information over to them. Timing though is, is, is the, is the issue here because we do have put in place that the options form are due the fifteenth. If that's something that we have to look at, we can have those conversations too. Those are not very difficult things to, to change if necessary. You know, Mrs. Bennett and I, last year, we went and we visited some of our underrepresented populations for a different kind of evening. It's something that we're willing to do and that we're going to do again and that we, that we're both very passionate about. So, you know, we, we plan on doing that. We plan on working with the amazing English learner teachers who are at Warren. CJ Wolfram was a part of this committee. She feels strongly and passionately about making sure that all of our families are presented with the right information and the proper information. And I know that she and, and Mrs. Bennett were in contact just two days ago to make sure that all the information was, was properly translated for, for her students. They have nights at the library where they invite families to go and do English language read-alouds regularly on Wednesday evenings. I believe it's once a month on Wednesday. I plan to go to, to those, to be able to talk to families. So like I said, there are quick wins and things that we can do. Obviously, there's a number of things that need to be done over a course of time, but we, we have already started to change some of these communication techniques. And we've already started to, to, to understand that there is an imbalance in, in, in the populations. And we, we do set aside a certain number of spots for students who are English learners. We have done that the previous two years and it has been outside of the lottery process and I've been very transparent with parents during the lottery process that said, there are so many spots that are going to be designated for students to help to increase the population to let it match our overall student population to the best of our ability. But, you know, thanks to the work that was done, we know that we have much work to be done. But again, I appreciate the sentiment that there are things that we can get done immediately and, and know that we're going to work to make sure that happens.
Thank you so much for sharing that. Yeah, I think that's, that's really helpful information and you guys are on it. Thank you. Anything else? Anybody else? No? Okay.
Sounds good.
So we're not voting on this.
No.
So I can move along. Thank you all so much for your time.
I can make a motion that it was a good job and they did it. If we want to vote on something, if you really want to.
I think we want to, you know.
Get moving.
Get moving.
Exactly. Alyssa has been so patient. Yes, and everybody is excused.
They can always pay whoever they want.
Extended-day program fees.
They don't seem to know that.
They were all here to support Mendez's report.
Thank you for being here, everybody.
You're not going to stay?
Don't take it personally.
No love for EDP.
Yeah, I don't know.
I'm going to stick around for you, kid.
I appreciate you.
We're still here. Thank you, guys. Thank you all.
Thank you, everyone.
Good night.
Have a good night. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Maureen.
You want to clear a room?
I know.
Now you know who, who's really true blue here.
That's right. That's right. So, I just want to say thank you for letting me come tonight. I always appreciate the opportunity to come and talk about some of the highlights of the extended day. And I know it's a long night for everybody, so I will keep it brief. But a couple of things I wanted to mention is that we've expanded our STEM programming a little bit this year at the Mendez. We just started an electronics club and the students are working on circuits and lasers and alarms to create what one student dubbed a little brother alarm. So, they'll be able to take these home and they'll be, they'll be working little mini burglar alarms. And we're going to be running three sessions of that. We just did our first one last week, so that's been very exciting. And we've added another component to our social emotional learning program. We just incorporated a yoga program for the students. It's, oh, right now, just at the Mendez, but we had twenty students register for it, which was surprising to me because I did not know this, there's no score at the end of a yoga class.
It's not a competition.
Yeah, so, it, assuming that, that all goes well and every indication is that it is, that we'll also expand it over to the Warren program. They've been very enthusiastic when they heard about it, so we're excited about that. And we're most enthusiastic and excited to just mention that we're celebrating our thirtieth anniversary this year. And we're having a thirtieth anniversary party and I brought gifts, well, not really gifts, but invitations.
Ah, thank you, thank you.
I did.
Pass those out.
How cute. Thanks.
That will be happening on the early release day of March twentieth and we'll be busing the Warren and the pitaway extended day programs students over to the Mendez, so we'll all be together for the day. And it, there'll be, the gym will be filled with inflatables. We'll be having a special presentation in the auditorium that parents are invited to and any siblings that don't attend extended day, we've invited all the administrators to come if they have time to pop in. I know everybody's really busy, especially on an early release day, but everybody's welcome, we'll save you a cupcake. And so, we hope to see people there. So, those are, those are the, the three things that are burning in my brain at the moment about, about the, the exciting things going on. And so, moving on to, well, does anybody have questions about any of that? All right. So, then moving on to the, the fees for next year for extended day, we're in a unique situation for the first time in a long time where I'm coming to, to make a request to increase the tuitions. It's been a long time since we've needed to do that and we've been very proud that we were able to maintain all of the programming and staffing and expand the repertoire of offerings. And we did that because we had quite an, an excess of revenue for many years and so we were trying to spend down some of those funds. We want to maintain a, a certain amount of, of balance so that if something were to happen, that we could handle it. For example, if even just three students from each breakfast bunch withdrew, that could mean a deficit of over ten thousand dollars. If I had somebody who was not taking health insurance, whose spouse changed jobs and now they needed to go on the family plan, that could, could be a budgetary issue. So, we need to maintain a certain amount of revenue, but at the same time, we, we didn't want it to be so exorbitant that, that it was out, out of balance. So, now we've spent down to a point that we feel it's the time to, to raise the tuitions so that we can continue to maintain the program.
Questions about that?
Maybe just kind of picking up on the question asked about the budget and the revolving account balances, right? So, your budget, or what we're talking about is a revolving account?
Yes.
So, is that a look at sort of getting fund balance? What's been provided to us is just under two hundred thousand dollars beginning of this school year. And we talked before about sort of what is our target in revolving funds and it sounds like we were aiming for roughly a year's worth of expenses. And it seems that in this particular case, we're well below that. I'm just wondering if there's a, a reason there or if I'm missing a, a part of the analysis? I mean, I understand why we, we've come down to where we are. It, it's more just understanding sort of what should that, what should that balance really be on a going forward basis?
Because the, the, it's fee-based and the enrollment has been strong, we, we really don't need a whole entire year's worth of expenses for, for the entire program. We'd have to have every student withdraw, in, in which case we wouldn't need any money anyway. But, but we, you know, we want to have, we want, we want to have that, that sweet spot where it, it, worst case scenario, that we did have some people withdraw, that we did need some health insurance. And historically, over thirty years, we've been able to look back and say, okay, where are those things that might happen? And that's, that's where we try to make sure that we have things covered because it did happen that we had a parent, a, a, an employee whose husband lost his job. So, she came on to the family health insurance. And we did have a situation where we had ten people withdraw from breakfast bunch one year. So, so the, the, that, those are the facts that have gone in to inform the decision as to what, what would be a reasonable amount of money to have on hand without having it so high that, that there's just no need for it. And, and to ask parents to, to, to increase tuition when you have a big, big balance wasn't really able to be justified.
So, Mark, to speak to your question more globally.
Yeah.
I think earlier when I was talking about the balances of our revolving funds, I was more focused on the revolving funds that we use to offset our budget. Revolving funds such as extended day or school lunch are freestanding and we do have guidance on the school lunch that says we should keep three months of expenditures as a reserve, while that's certainly not anywhere near what they bring in every year. For a program like EDP, if their enrollment goes down, if they bring in less tuition, a lot of their expenses go down too because less kids are going on field, on their field trips, less kids are going, you know, snacks.
Less staff.
Less staffing is needed. So, for EDP and school lunch, we, we focus more on what's a good balance. And ten years ago, it was up around three hundred and fifty thousand dollars, which was too high. And we were having conversations with town management about people on boards looking at all of our balances and what they really should be at and made a decision that we needed to spend that down and that's what we've been doing over the year. We think a hundred and fifty thousand is a good balance for this account.
Thank you.
I have a question. Similar to what?
It's all right.
Similar to what the preschool's gone through where we're evaluating, okay, that we can't make financially work with two or three days, are you seeing parents?
I'm sorry, I can't hear you.
Are you seeing parents use only a couple of days a week versus the full five days? And do we have any risks or, or threats there as far as the feasibility of the program with less days of usage? I'm thinking just sort of what we went through with the preschool.
Our goal has always been to serve the working parents and there are some after-school programs that require a minimum of two days or three days per week. We have never, ever done that. If you need five days, come on. If you need one day, come in. We'll do, you know, what you need. And we haven't had any problems in terms of you might go two days a week, he goes three days, there's a five day spot, she goes one, he goes four, there's another five and they all go five days a week. And since we do have a waiting list, it really hasn't been an issue. The only time it's ever been a little bit of an issue is if we only had a Friday opening. There are a lot of people that don't want just a Friday, so we might carry a few vacancies here or there some years for that. But the only, the only place where we rarely have vacancies right now is breakfast bunch at the Mendez, but that's because they go to school so early.
That's our fault, is what you're saying.
Yes, but then they come to me earlier, so it's better. Oh, it's way better.
Every minute counts. Any other questions? I mean, it looks from this list here that what, what you're recommending for the tuition increases is still pretty low compared to neighboring tuitions. So, it's, it's more than reasonable.
If, if we raise the tuitions to what I'm asking for, we'll still be the lowest of every town on this list. And these are their current rates. I'm assuming they'll probably go up next year as well.
And so, we have this sheet here, right, where you've broken it down?
Yep.
It's like a, the breakfast bunch is a dollar a day?
That, that's the increase that we're asking for, yes. And only for Kate, and only for Kate through two. We're not asking for an increase for grades three through six.
Okay. And after school, you're increasing it two dollars per day?
Yes.
And the early release is two dollars?
So, with, with the idea that we've kind of gotten down to or going to be down to a, a balance the end of the year that we want to maintain?
Yes.
Do you anticipate that we're going to be needing to have these kind of rate increases more regularly to keep up with expenses?
I'm, I'm certainly hoping not because if we, if we do this increase, so, so where we get, I, I assume we're going to end this year at a, just under a hundred and fifty thousand dollars. If we do this increase, then the following year, it looks like we'll end at approximately the same exact place. That's never happened because we were spending down. So, this is a little bit new for me. So, it, you know, it depends on, on salaries in terms of who returns. It won't, because new people get brought in at a lower rate, who takes health insurance. So, if we get a few more people who need health insurance, then that could bump expenses up, but I'm certainly hoping not.
I don't anticipate we'll be back every year, but I can pretty well guarantee it won't be another ten years.
Right, right, right. Because we don't, we, we don't have that, that fund to sustain us any, anymore. But, but what we're trying to avoid is going to parents, okay, we're increasing twenty-five cents a day. Oh, and next year, twenty-five cents a day. People feel, I think, a little nickel and dime that way and, and I think it, a one and done is just easier for, for, for the budget to continue to maintain itself.
Just one, one follow-up because you mentioned health insurance a couple of times. I thought health insurance is, for budgetary purposes, count, counted on the general government side?
Not, not for extended day. We're, we're fully self-supported.
Well, yeah, yeah, so.
Both extended day and preschool is charged back for the town portion of the employees' health insurance. Think back twenty-five, thirty years ago when these programs started, they were standalone programs and the town required that they get paid back for the cost of the health insurance. It's certainly one of the things on our plate to kind of start absorbing back in.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? Somebody want to make a motion?
I move to approve the fees for the Ashland extended day program for the twenty nineteen, twenty, twenty school year as presented.
Second. All in favor?
Aye. Thank you. Okay, well, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Hope to see you on the twentieth.
Yeah, thanks for the invite.
Yeah, thank you for the invitation.
All right, school bus fees. School bus transportation fees.
So, we're recommending that you vote to keep the bus fees the same as this, this current year, which is three hundred and fifty dollars per child with a seven hundred dollar family maximum, but there is an early registration discount if we receive payment before May first, which would be two hundred and eighty dollars a child with five hundred sixty dollar cap. We did this last year. It was so helpful in getting registrations in, in a timely manner. I, I think Erin and I kind of looked at it the year before. We had four hundred registrations come in over the summer and last summer, we had about a hundred.
Excellent.
And there's been a real challenge with the bus routes, so the earlier we can get this information in, the better.
Excellent.
Great, thank you. I move to approve the school bus fees for the two thousand nineteen, two thousand twenty school year as follows. Three hundred and fifty dollars per child with a seven hundred dollar maximum family cap and an early registration discount if paid, payment is received before May first of two hundred and eighty dollars per child or five hundred and sixty family cap.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Excellent. Thank you.
Thanks, Barbara.
Thank you.
Now it's a normal night.
Exactly.
We're used to that.
All right. Only the superintendent and, and us to listen to the mid-cycle.
Did we lose our assistant?
Review. Temporarily.
He'll be back.
Eleven questions.
So, here we are, the mid-cycle review, a reminder to the community with the superintendent review process that we adopted. This is a required step along the way where we stop mid-year to let the superintendent know whether or not there are any concerns or just to let him know whether we're pleased with the progress on his goals. So, having said that, the report for this mid-cycle is as follows. The committee is pleased with the current progress towards the superintendent's goals. The prioritization of SEL, outreach to the community and other boards and organizations, analysis of Mendez and preschool programs, and working on the blueprint for the district are important initiatives of the district that are all moving forward as expected. Members appreciate improvements in communication and processes that have come about through reflection and self-evaluation. No concerns have been raised and we're pleased with the actions taken to continue to move the district forward. So, that's where we're at at mid-cycle. Does anybody have anything they want to ask or add or anything? Now's your chance. Don't get this chance again until June or May. Does everybody feel like that's reflective of your understanding of how things are going? Excellent.
And would we like to extend an opportunity for?
Always.
Any feedback?
Do you like to share anything, Nicole? This is an opportunity just to let Mr. Adams.
It actually matters a lot more than what you say than what we say.
Yeah, make him cry. Come on.
Stop it.
Doesn't take much.
I think this is on perfectly, especially with the social emotional learning we've seen at the high school with the dogs, love the dogs, that come in. And just having a whole bunch of opportunities there and resources for us to go to. Guidance is now counseling, which is kind of cool. The community outreach, there's definitely been so much more involvement with community and the high school. It's not just high school as its own entity. It's really high, the Ashland High School is part of the Ashland community and we give back to that community and they give back to us, so that's something that's good to see. I'd say this is right on track.
Excellent. Thank you so much. We always really appreciate your input. And what about you, Mr. Adams?
What about me?
Anything you want to add?
No, I, I think, you know, I, I, this morning in our admin team meeting, we, we actually talked a little bit about stepping back for a moment as a, as an organization in, in looking and memorializing some things that we've done over the course of not just this year, but over the past five years or so and, and really thinking, I don't do it well. And whenever we're doing evaluations, we should stop and really reflect. I, I do it at the end of the year and think about, okay, what's next? And I struggle quite often when we're in the middle of things to step back and say, hey, we've done some pretty good things as a group, as an organization, as a committee, as a leadership team. And interestingly enough, I, before I, I came tonight, I, I was at a, a local subway and, and this gentleman walked in and he, he's a school committee member in Clinton, but he's also a special ed director in, in Wellesley. And I, I know him through a variety of, of avenues. And, and he said, you know, Jim, you have a tremendous administrative team in Ashland. And, you know, I, and, and he's, he was talking from a, a school committee perspective from Clinton. And, and he said, how, how have you done that? And I said, I, I'm not quite sure how we've done it. We've worked hard at it. And he said, a lot of us talk about some of the things you've done. And more so, not from his Wellesley perspective, but from his, from his Clinton perspective and, and, and the school committee perspective. And, and I said, I'm very, very fortunate. And that's what we talked about this morning is that we have support from the board. I think our principals feel supported, that they have autonomy to make really good choices or make choices that impact their buildings, but they're now thinking, to Nicole's point, more globally as a public school system. So, when we're talking about hiring and the process of sustainability in terms of building programs, they're thinking that way now, which I don't think we were there ten years ago when I started here. And I think that has allowed these goals to be moving forward, that not afraid to have conversations about the Mendez programming, not afraid to have conversations about the pitaway programming, not afraid to have uh, not afraid to have, you know, disagreements with where we're headed with the vision and the mission. That's where it's happening. It's not happening by me. It's happening by really the administrative leadership team and, um, you know, I give them full credit for really jumping on board and and doing what's best for each of the kids and their buildings. And and I certainly think they're so student-centered in how they approach things that it it makes, um, makes, you know, makes us look good. It makes, uh, the community, um, look good and, um, and it's not just optics. I think we're doing some really good stuff and that that word, that document that we've created, I I do look back and I think about, wow. Where were we five years ago? We were charging four thousand dollars for tuition for kindergarten, right? Uh, where were we, uh, five years ago when we didn't have these specialized programs keeping kids in-house and keeping them as part of our community? Where were we five years ago not having a counselor at every grade level, not focusing on social emotional learning?
What were our charter numbers?
Right, where were our charter school numbers? How how has our enrollment grown? All of those things, right? Later start times, I know there's still disagreement on, but think about over what has happened since we changed across the Commonwealth. And think about the twenty other districts and more to come that have changed since then, understanding it's good for kids. We may not see the benefits right away, uh, because it's change, but we've done some good stuff. And and it's only through the support of of this body that allows for that to move forward. So so that's that's all I have, so thank you.
I think that's an amazing point, just that it's good for kids because that's what we see. Even if it's a scary change or something really new, it's good for kids.
Thanks, it's awesome. Do you have a report?
Um, do I have a report? I I am very pleased my wife is now back in the country.
Yay.
And, uh,
You survived.
And your sanity's back.
I survived.
She'll have the right number of kids.
I still, yeah, she has the right, well, right. I asked, I I have yet to actually really have a conversation with her, um, in the last twelve days, but she did report she brought the same number of kids back from Spain that she brought over, so I'm sure the Maynard School District is happy. Same ones?
Yeah.
She didn't say that, she just said the same number. Um, and she came home to, uh, you know, the the three Adams boys and the dog, so and the seven chickens, so everyone is good, right? Um, but but no, on a more serious note, um, I, you know, I I wanted to to express, you know, you know, my sympathy and to to the Silver and Dukka family. And, uh, as you know, we we lost one of our favorite Ashland kids of of all time, and that's not to to diminish any anyone else in the past either, but, um, you know, Jake Silver passed away this past weekend and and, um, it's been a hard week. It it'll continue to be a hard week. We've had many losses in our community, uh, over the past two years. Um, you know, today is also, uh, you know, anniversary of of losing Brendan Petrie. Um, and it's, as a superintendent, as a, just a, someone who looks at all of our kids and our our community, it's it's a challenge. Uh, I don't think, uh, many superintendents go through this in a lifetime, and and we've gone through quite a bit. Uh, and I've had a lot of my colleagues reach out, which I'm so happy and proud to be a part of the Superintendent's Association. Um, but when I when I met with, um, Miss Ay Cur and I, the Saturday, this past Saturday, met with, um, uh, Melissa and Tony and and Haley and and talking about what's next and how do we go through this process as a community and and Jake was so, um, adamant about what he wanted and and how he wanted to be, uh, thought of and, uh, in terms of, um, a memorial. And, uh, he wanted to do something out on the football field, but, uh, we knew the 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 weather was not gonna be conducive to that, uh, over this weekend. And so on on Sunday, uh, there will be a memorial, um, uh, at the high school, eleven o'clock in the gymnasium. And, you know, it, you know, I I think it's a fitting, uh, for Jake and what he wanted. And and I haven't shared this, but we, uh, he did this year, um, he emailed me and says, Mr. Adams, there's something I wanna do. And I said, what is it? He said, I wanna do, uh, and go on, uh, and host the basketball game with you and Mr. McGann. So the first basketball game of the year this year that Mr. McGann and I on a Friday night, um, would do the television for WACA. And and Jake was part of that crew. So it was a three-person crew. It's rarely three people in the crew, right? So at the end of the night, he he said to me, he said, I've wanted to do this with you since my freshman year. And to me, that I I I didn't know that, right? I didn't, wasn't something that for me that was, uh, even a thought, right? That heck, is anyone really listening to us? No, not really, cuz we're not even talking about basketball half the time or ninety percent of the time. Um, but Mr. McGann and I, they're having fun and loving to see the kids and participate and and but he made it a point to say, I love it when you guys do this. And I wanted to be a part of you and Mr. McGann, uh, one time. And I'll never forget that. It was it was awesome. So, um, that's my report is, you know, certainly gonna, uh, miss his his vibrant nature, his love for Ashland and the Ashland Public Schools and Ashland High School in particular. And, uh, I wanna wish his family well. It's and and all of those in our community who have lost someone recently and, um, that that the schools and the community are supportive and and care and are here for all of you. So that's it, that's all I have.
Thanks, Jim.
Follow that. I'm good, I'm done.
If you could drop a mic, you would.
I can't.
Do you have one?
Almost have.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Oh, my turn.
Horn approvals.
I got it. All right. Between February thirteenth, two thousand nineteen and February twenty-seventh, two thousand nineteen, I, Kathleen Bates, authorized by my signature, payables in the amount of two hundred three thousand, one hundred fifty-two dollars and eighty-two cents. This includes general fund expenses of one hundred seventeen thousand, nine hundred thirty-seven dollars and sixty-two cents, revolving expenses of sixty-five thousand, four hundred three dollars and fifty cents, grant expenses of twelve thousand, four hundred thirty-nine dollars and zero cents. Finally, I authorize payroll in the amount of one million, eighty-eight thousand, two hundred ninety-nine dollars and fifty-four cents.
Thank you, Kathy.
You're welcome.
Minutes of February thirteenth, saw that they were, were they amended?
Yeah.
Already, yeah, there was a, there was one change.
Yeah, just in in my number report. And the only reason I even changed it is because it was, uh, referring to our our best process. I wanna make sure that the minutes were accurate because we have to make sure that we're we're accurate in what we're doing, uh, on the building.
Got you. Anybody have anything else to add?
I didn't have anything else to add.
Do we have a motion to accept those minutes of February thirteenth?
As amended, yes.
As amended? All in favor?
Aye.
An abstain, just because I wasn't at the meeting.
Okay, got you. Thank you, Erin. Do we have gifts and donations?
We do, we have a couple. Um, Plan A donated five hundred and three dollars, sixty-five cents, miscellaneous gifts and donations. Uh, Ms. Chaney and Ms. Dwayne at the high school donated fifty dollars to our pathways program and followed books, uh, twelve dollars and eight cents for, uh, textbooks that we, uh, returned, uh, for five hundred sixty-five dollars, seventy-three cents total.
Excellent, thank you. Do we have a motion to accept the gifts and donations?
The move.
Second, anyone?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And? How about some member updates? You wanna start, Nicole?
Sure, um, I have a bunch of NHS stuff. Uh, so our variety show, we held auditions and our talent show, our variety show, is March seventh next week on Thursday night at seven o'clock. So if you wanna come out, it's gonna be fun. Um, we, as a board, are, uh, teaming up with the Hopkinton NHS Board, um, to not partner with, but have their support for our Out of the Darkness Walk in April. Um, so there was a meeting today and we're gonna meet with, so meeting with their board today and we're gonna meet with their entire club tomorrow after school to explain what the walk is, how they can get involved. Um, so just to have more involvement on that. And speaking of the walk, we officially have a page. If you go to the American Foundation for Suicide Prevention website and search up campus walks and then just Ashland High School, you'll see us up there. Um, we're up to three thousand dollars right now, which is awesome. Our goal is ten thousand, so hopefully we reach that.
So what what is the walk?
Um, so it's a memory of specifically for us, Brendan Petrie. Um, it's an Out of the Darkness Walk through the American Foundation for Suicide Prevention. That's our charity this year as, um, a club, NHS. And, uh, they hold them throughout the like communities. Natick has done them. I've been to the Natick one that they had in honor of Brendan as well. Um, members are required to go, but obviously it's something that they all want to do. Uh, you can make teams, just sign up to walk. Uh, it's an event. We're holding it at the high school. Um.
And i- is there a route you're gonna walk? Are you just gonna walk the track or?
Yeah, so it's a route that we're gonna make. We're gonna have, we have to have like a police detail and all that, so it's very formal.
Okay. Oh.
Um, there's things for everybody there. It's very informational. Uh, the foundation provides pamphlets. Um, there's beads. So you get beads for coming and then you get beads based on your, um, experience with suicide if you've lost a friend, a parent, struggled with mental health yourself. So it's very supportive. It's very community-based, um, and the foundation helps provide a lot of the materials. So, yeah.
Awesome.
Is it a long walk?
No, it's not very long at all.
Okay.
Excellent, thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Kendall?
Um, let's see, uh, so I did attend, uh, helped with the attendance on Stratum Zoom session.
How was that?
It was well attended.
You doubled it.
Well.
It 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 wasn't very well attended, but I I would I would, uh, probably chalk that up to.
Vacation, vacation. Did you guys have a nice chat?
There was a a lot of, it was, it was there.
There was a parent there and we had a great conversation.
Excellent, excellent.
Um, uh, I also, uh, did a spot on, uh, uh, Yolanda Greaves', uh, show last week.
Great.
Around the clock. Uh, she asked me to be on there. We've been working through the the, uh, selection subcommittee for the, uh, project manager for the building committee. We, uh, we've held interviews on, so as I reported last time, we shortlisted, um, respondents and then this past Monday, we held interviews, so that was a a a long day and I.
For the five on Monday?
Yeah, but we 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 only interviewed, ended up interviewing four.
Oh, okay.
But, uh, but yeah, so it was, uh, it was a long day, uh, roughly four and a half, five hours worth of interviews.
Wow.
Um, so thank the sub, uh, subcommittee for that long day and, um, and the respondents too. They were, we had, it's, you know, we can't go wrong with any of our choices.
Oh, great, that's good to hear.
And then we actually met just before, um, this meeting.
Oh, okay.
To just kind of reflect on the interviews and
Okay, great.
and 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 those things. Um, so and I and I wanna echo, um, you know, Jim's sentiments to, uh, uh, the Silver and Dukka families and and everyone in the community and and also, uh, you know, thank them that they shared a very personal journey with with community. I think that, uh, that brought the community closer together and 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 I hope that
That's a good point.
um, that the support helped them, um, but it's, uh, you know, it it isn't easy to open up and share that, so, um, I think the community benefited from their openness, so.
Yeah, I will, I completely agree. I I remember weirdly, when my mom was dying of cancer, that I never felt more loved. And so I hope the Dukka and Silver families felt that with how the community rallied, um, around them, especially like some of the really close friends, like the Clayes and the, um, um, Ramos families and just everything that they did. Um, you know, seeing the orange ribbons and seeing just like how far and wide this thing spread. And I do think being honest about one of life's processes and not hiding it, um, even in all its raw and painful detail is helpful for even the adults and some of the kids. And, um, you know, some of what she wrote really resonated with me and, uh, literally, I'm not on Facebook anymore, but I checked it daily, um, for him. So, um, that is amazing. Um, I wanna say another thank you. Um, our time as foster parents has wrapped up. And so a huge thank you to everybody in the school community. Um, I ended up having three children at one point or another in the Ashland schools, um, with various needs other than regular children have. And, um, just the response of everybody to support us, support them. Um, and then even support my own two kids, knowing everything that was going on at home. So, um, now life is a little bit back to normal. So, so now I have no more excuses for when I don't have any other, like, the laundry list that Paul has of all the things that he's done, like, my last loop, get better.
Kathy.
Uh, I don't really have any updates. It's been pretty quiet in the last two weeks. Um, I did wanna note the, um, the Ashland wrestlers though are doing well. Uh, Benny Herrera, I think, I think I have this right, placed fourth at States and Ari Dinaman placed seventh at States. And both of them are going on to New England's this weekend, so it's pretty exciting.
Come a long way, I hope we're ready. I, um, I'll just echo the sentiments of Jim, Paul, Erin with regard to the Dukka Silver family and, um, move on from there.
Same. Uh, and I don't have any activities to speak about since the last time we were here, so. That's it.
That's it.
All right.
Action items.
Action items.
Do we, yeah. Do we wanna add, you know, for the summer, do we wanna add that, um?
Yeah.
Just keep the conversation.
The, um, the Mendez conversation.
Yeah, just put it in the summer.
Yeah.
We'll just change the date. It's on the list, actually, but.
Oh, there it is, right, right, right. Yeah, so maybe just summer workshop.
Update to discussion and change the date.
Absolutely, yep.
Um, at some point, it's too little, too early, but we might wanna talk about if we need that more than one day this summer because we have a number of kind of heavy-duty topics to tackle. And I want them to all get the energy that, you know, when we're when we're there all day, sometimes, you know, at the end of the day, it's hard to start a new topic that is requires, um, a lot of thought and decision-making. So, but that's not anything we need to decide right now. On the list, district fees, um, are we still? We're just gonna do that this summer?
Yep.
Um, athletic fee structure, discussion of Columbus Day, calendar holidays, Mendez academic study update all in the summer.
Oh.
We'll just call it discussion instead of update, yep.
Yeah, um, the public hearing that just happened, we can cross that one off the list. And I feel like there's more that we said that we would talk about this summer, but I'm sure that will present itself as we.
It seems to.
Do we need to start putting on here the?
Probably maybe have some more building-related issues that we'll be wanting to talk about
Yeah.
at the summer and programming.
And and even the blueprint, uh, will be a a summer finalized summer topic.
Yeah.
We'll have, uh, we'll have the mission, vision and and the improvement priority areas, um, ready for summer conversation for adoption. And then, uh, we'll have, you know, the action items that that we should be taking, but that has to go through the, you know, the filters of of the administrators right now. We've done a lot of work with it. I'm I'm actually getting the final feedback from, uh, the blueprint work group that I have. And then, you know, we'll clean it up and that'll be then presented to the community again. Uh, so there's a lot going on with that. All right, just cuz you you mentioned, I'm just having a thought now. I'll put it out there before I lose the thought. Um, you know, given sort of some of these conversations, sort of, we start them in the summer, but they, either because we have more to do as follow-up or because of of time, don't get finished and, you know, they, we end up working, worrying about it. Finalizing a blueprint, we hope to do over the summer, we don't get to until October. And I'm wondering if if at least we should keep an eye on the possibility of doing something perhaps shortly after school ends, before people scatter, to at least identify the first discussion point so that if there's sort of a further dialogue that needs to be had or additional research that people are are interested in gathering to finish a discussion, then we'd still be able to have the second half of that before school starts again.
Mm-hmm.
Um, I don't, I'm not suggesting we resolve on that point now, but.
Yeah, no, I'm I'm with you. I agree. You know, maybe even, you know, a good long meeting each month sort of thing, you know, because inevitably too, things are gonna always do crop up, like documents that we need to sign. It might just be like a two-second thing. But that happens every single year and it's it's fine and we we have, always have a good, successful day, but I think being able to continue some of that deeper thinking work, especially when there are a number of issues that we wanna talk about, I I I just already feeling like that one day might not be adequate. Or maybe even it's breaking it up into shorter, shorter days. or maybe even it's breaking it up into shorter, shorter days, um, but having more of them, so that we can tackle every issue rather than feeling, you know, that we have to get it done.
Yeah, well, it just might make sense to have a, a more, you know,
Yeah.
a, a, a three-hour set aside morning that, you know, to, to wrap up those things, because we always.
Yeah, I agree, Mark.
We always have a discussion, and then there's something hanging, there is, let's grab this piece of information, oh, you know, Marco, check up, you know, come up with some wording for this, as opposed to right on the spot, and, and that might allow us to tie up things a little bit better, yeah?
Right.
Yep.
Maybe we should by, I don't know, April or something, kind of come to.
Yeah, we can even put that on a, on, on the action item list, so we don't forget to make that plan.
You'll do like a retreat schedule, um, you know, on the action items.
It seemed like maybe doing that before April vacation, sounds like, but the, we're trying to at least see if we have an idea, and maybe people have an idea what their summer vacation plans will look like, too, so.
Sure. Okay, anything else? Motion to adjourn?
It's moved.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, thank you.